Good evening. This is the August 8, 2024 Town of Fishkill Planning Board Meeting. The meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Few announcements before we get started this evening. First is a reminder to silence the cell phones while in the meeting room. Second would be for those who are speaking at the microphone this evening, please speak into the microphone so that the audience in the room and at home can hear what we're all saying. At the moment, we have four regular voting members and two alternate members present for tonight's meeting. Planning Board Chairman John Cantor is absent tonight, and I, as the vice chair, will be taking over for him as the planning board chair for the evening. Jody Burka is absent this evening, and a regular member, voting member Fred Cantor, is running late, should be here shortly. So with that said, even with Fred arriving in a little bit, we still have two openings, so I would like to appoint both of our alternate members, VJ Gopau and Kevin O'Connell, as voting members this evening to fill in for John Cantor and Jody Burka. Another note, Christian Moore is filling in for John Bodendorf this evening as planning board engineer from CPL. Good evening. Another announcement, we did receive a letter regarding Companion Animal Hospital on July 22, 2024. They're not on the agenda this evening, but they did indicate that they are withdrawing their application before the planning board, and I thought it would make sense to mention that here. First item on the agenda this evening is public hearing. Homeland Towers Communications Tower, 73 Route 9, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicants seek Site Development Plan approval and Special Use Permit approval to construct a personal wireless services facility, including a 150-foot monopole with a fenced equipment compound at the base of the facility. Parcel for this proposal is located at 73 Route 9 and consists of 4.03 acres in the GB, General Business Zoning District. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was opened on July 11, so we don't need a motion at this time. So I would like to welcome the applicant's representative, David Kenny. If you could please give us a brief overview of the items that have been presented to the board since our previous meeting. I think it makes sense to talk about that now in light of the comments that we may receive.
Again, for the record, my name is David Kenny. I'm attorney of Snyder, Snyder. I'm here tonight to represent the applicants, Homeland Towers, Verizon Wireless. One of the comments that...
Thank you, Pete.
Technology is always important. One of the things that we were asked to do was to look at alternative sites or alternative locations on an alternative property to the north, the Century aggregates property. It's the quarry property that surrounds our site as well as extends further to the north. So again, we had originally reached out to this property owner in our initial application, and when we first made a filing here in December and our first meeting in January, was asked that we again reach out to them, and we had no response. However, at the request of the board, we went again and met with the property owner, Lucas Clemente. He offered two locations on his property that he would make available for us for this tower. We reviewed both of them from a site acquisition standpoint and from a radio frequency justification standpoint. The two locations are shown on the screen right now. This was shown in an alternate site analysis document. Essentially, these were the two locations he offered because he does have an active mining operation on the property and does have future plans for the property. So, you know, we don't have carte blanche to go wherever we want on the property. These were the two locations that were offered to us. Both of the locations, we felt, were not better locations than our current proposed locations for a couple of various reasons. These two locations are at lower elevations, so they would require a significantly taller tower, approximately 190 feet. Again, we're only proposing 150 feet at our current site, but the change in elevation requires a significant increase in the height of the tower to maintain a similar level of coverage, although there is a loss of coverage anytime we move further north because we were at pretty much the furthest north we could be for our search ring, so to speak. In addition, there's also these locations are a little bit closer to the actual Route 9, so they'd be a little bit closer to the roadway, and both of these locations would require substantial tree removal. The trees being removed would not only open up views of the facility, but also these trees are currently screening the industrial use going on the property, the mining operations. So again, it would have a negative impact on preserving this gateway corridor. We also looked at it from a radio frequency justification standpoint, and both of these sites, again, would require a taller tower to maintain similar coverage, but there would be a little bit of a loss of coverage even going further north. So just from a radio frequency standpoint and a site acquisition standpoint, we respectfully submit that our proposed site is a better alternative and is actually the least intrusive alternative for this site. So we did review that from both a radio frequency standpoint and a site acquisition standpoint, but we're here tonight to answer any questions the board might have. Klaus Wimmer, the regional manager for Homeland Towers, was the person who actually went and met with the property owner and walked the site to find these locations, so he can give further detail on that occurrence if you guys would like more information. Another request at the board was an update to our radio frequency, our visual analysis report. Just a small request was, although we're only proposing antennas for Verizon, and it's kind of just a best guess at what the next carrier would put on, for example, you know, I've worked with other carriers, Dish Wireless, they're only putting about three antennas on a facility right now because they only operate at the 5G network, so they wouldn't have as the same number of antennas as other carriers. However, what we did was a full build-out, assuming all of the carriers would build similar to what Verizon is building. So we did some of a full build-out analysis, and this would be with four carriers, as well as a municipal whip antenna at the top of the tower. The municipal whip antenna is only about two inches in diameter, so it's pretty much invisible whenever you're looking at these distances, but this does actually have a simulation showing a six-foot-tall and a two-inch-diameter whip antenna. Again, that's the antennas that's used by emergency communications equipment, so if police, fire, EMS had a need for their services or their equipment on this facility, we would provide that free of cost, no rent, so we would also have space for, on our tower for that co-location as well. But we do show four carriers at this site. Other than that, those were really the main kind of changes or the new submissions that we prepared in this most recent filing. However, I'm happy to discuss any aspect of it, and we also would like to hear further from the public.
You said Mr. Wimmer would have a little bit more information on the outreach to the other property?
Sure. You can go through his whole review.
I think I'd like to hear that now, just in light of the public comments we're expecting.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Klaus Wimmer. I'm the project manager for Homeland Towers for this project. As Mr. Kenny mentioned, I met with Luke Clemente on the 16th, I believe, I think it was. Yes, met him onsite on July 16. He then proceeded, we drove his car, and we, he took us to these two locations that I think, I don't know if we can go back to these. Where's this? Yeah. God damn it. I'm lost without a mouse. Yeah, so, blow this up a little bit here. So, yeah, he first took me to that, what is shown as location one. There is a little path here that kind of goes into this, into this wooded area. We walked in there a little bit, and I took some photos, I think, which are attached here as exhibit A, I believe. It is a fairly wooded area. Yeah, this is it. This is a photo of that, of that location. So after that, we, he then showed me another location further south. This location here, alternate location two, and I have to say, this is, right there is a bridge that goes over the creek, and this is pretty much right at creek level before you go over the bridge. And again, this is fairly heavily wooded. Oops. I'm sorry. This is it, yeah. That is, that is that area. And then we basically proceeded with our analysis, as Mr. Kenny mentioned, to assess it from an elevation perspective, coverage perspective, zoning perspective, and of course, environmental impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board, or are we ready for...
I have a question. When you met with Mr. Clemente or whoever...
Yes.
Is that, am I pronouncing that correctly?
I'm not sure.
Is, these are the two locations that he particularly offered up.
Yes.
Did you have any discussions at all with him at the time? If you, from your perspective, what might have been on his property, better locations than the ones that he offered up? In other words, increase in elevation, less wooded destruction?
I did ask him if there were any other locations, but he did indicate that he had, you know, plans for, for other areas of his property. For instance, this wooded knoll that, that this area here that Liz had mentioned, he has, he has plans for that. I'm not sure what it is, but apparently it's planned into his operations.
So those are the, so you didn't have any negotiations with him at all in terms of particular locations? You just looked, this is what he offered up, this is what you looked at, these are the issues, okay?
Yes.
Got it?
Yep.
Just one small point. When they had originally approached Mr. Clemente, the area on the property that they had originally looked at was further south over here, closer to Carol Lane entrance, which would have been probably right behind the Battery Monument. At that time, he never reached out to us, so we never got to further pursue that area on the property, but when we had first looked at this property as being a potential candidate, the area that we originally were looking was down here, but that would have been directly behind the Battery Monument, so to speak. So I don't, I believe that wouldn't have been a better alternative site.
I'm just, I'm just surprised with, you know, somewhat familiar with that area, there's various different levels of relief in the area that would provide various different sites depending on negotiations and, you know, annual remuneration to the property owner and so on, that might be more conducive to 150-foot tower.
My understanding from Klaus's interactions with the property owner was the negotiation wasn't, well, if you paid more money, we'd give you this other place on the property. It was more related to, he has future development plans for the mining operations in his property, so these were areas on the property which wouldn't impact those future plans. Again, you know, the tower's going to be standing there for, for our hopes a very long time, so we'd have to relocate if he'd have to redevelop.
Okay. Thank you. Can I see a show of hands from the members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's public hearing for this item? Okay, there are a few. I will read the rules of conduct for public hearings. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone and limited to no more than four minutes. There will be a warning when there is one minute left. Speakers should provide only new or different information. Repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings are discouraged. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing so that they can summarize their comments during the hearing. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the board, in particular the application. Verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts or obscene language are prohibited. No speaker shall make any personal attacks on anyone. If a person continues to interrupt after the chair has asked them to stop, they will be asked to leave and may be escorted from the meeting room if necessary. I did want to add a few other items for everyone's consideration. When you come to the podium, please address your questions and comments to the planning board. The purpose of the hearing is to capture the public's comments on the record so that the applicant can address them, either later in the evening, during the project review, or in a subsequent formal submittal to the board. And the intent of the public hearing is not a direct question-and-answer session, so, but please be assured that the board will ask the applicant to respond to substantive comments from the public. So with that, I will, actually, I do have, we did receive communications from the public before the hearing. We did receive photos from Michelle McGuire submitted at the July 11 public hearing. Those were forwarded to the board by Debbie on July 18 via email, so we do have those photos. And those were taken from their residence at 233 Carol Lane, presumably in the direction of the proposed cell tower. I did see a few hands, so I will, sir, you at the end? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gary Marino, 227 Carol Lane. I'm just concerned, I would like the board to urge the developer to possibly look at some alternate locations besides these two that weren't already, that were looked at. I feel that they're not looking to do this because they have to do 40 more feet of the tower and take down more trees. I don't think that's a good enough answer. I think these spots could be utilized, and I just would want to urge the board to maybe look into other alternate sites, because it's very unique where we are. We're a residential area, butted up with commercial property. When I look out my deck, I have garages there now. Now I'm going to be looking at, from my deck, a pole behind it. I mean, I don't think it's right, and I would really urge the board to have them look for alternate sites. Do the due diligence, and there could, there's got to be another place for this pole to go where it's not in the, in the view of the Carol Lane residents. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Yehav Elnikash. I'm 246 Carol Lane. Similar sentiment, just pretty much everybody on Carol Lane, we moved there because we have beautiful views of the mountainside, and just when you did the test and we had the balloon hanging up, it's a glaring eyesight. You know, nobody, nobody would want this, you know, to stare at something like this over your, you know, out of your front yard or looking out of your window, you know. It's the, I understand there'd be additional expense, putting it a little further with a taller tower, clearing the extra trees, and even with a loss of signal, many of us have lived here for decades at this point, so we're fine with the cell service. You know, we've lived with it as it is. Just having it, if it's a little bit better, but not as good as it would have been, but it's not destroying our views, you know, I think that, that's a livable thing. That's pretty much it. It's just, we, we could live with, we're living without the additional cell service now, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ed Bushak, 238 Carol Lane, Fishkill. Later, I'd like to see a blown-up image of the fully implemented pole, because I couldn't really see, I don't think the public could see really what it looked like with the different antennas on it, so I'd like to see a bigger, bigger picture of that. And the recently discussed alternate sites were included in their original list that were submitted. They were good then, but now, all of a sudden, they're not good. All right? I'd like to know why the DOT substation is not being looked at. There's plenty of room there. Thale property and the Village of Fishkill property, which was on their original list. So I'd like them to look more into alternate sites. And when I spoke with Mr. Clemente before he met with Mr. Wimmer, he had indicated that the, the Snow Valley entrance was the one where he was considering the tower to be placed. But now I see that it's a, it's further up. Now, the Snow Valley entrance is, I'm sorry, is totally clear. There's no trees to be taken down. It even looks higher than the Lysicatos site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anybody on that side? No. Okay. So if there are no more members of the public wishing to speak this evening, the board should discuss whether to close the public hearing tonight or to continue the hearing at a subsequent meeting. If we wish to close the public hearing this evening, we could potentially allow for a written comment period. I know some folks had spoken tonight. It would be helpful to have their comments in writing, so that is something we can consider as well. I believe the next submittal deadline for the planning board is the 28th of August, so that would potentially maybe next Friday as a suggested date, but I will throw that out to the, to the board for their thoughts. Actually, I'll start with Liz, I guess.
Actually, I just, I had a thought about a couple of comments that had been made, and I wondered if we could hear if there are any more, you know, if, if the applicant's representatives would want to give any responses before you close the hearing. That's up to the board. I defer to you. And, and the one thing that sort of came up was the idea of the lower sites would have to have higher towers, and I'm guessing that that would bring them up close to the top of the one on the proposed site. So I was curious about whether that question could be answered, but, I mean, it could be either answered on the record now, or it could be in a response letter after. It's up to the board.
We would endeavor to do both. We'd absolutely provide in written comments or in written response to these comments we've heard tonight. The first thing I would note was that all of the comments were essentially the same comment, is review alternative sites. That was a comment that we got at the last meeting, so I do, I think it's a good idea to keep open the comment period for written comments, but I would suggest that the board close the public hearing tonight. That doesn't mean we won't continue to respond to comments, and it doesn't mean that if new written comments come in in the next week, we won't respond to those. I just think that the comments that we're receiving now seem to be the same comment repeated. But regarding some responses, the alternative locations, the first commenter, Mr. Marino, it made it seem as if we only reviewed these two alternative locations, and that's actually not what happened, as this board knows. We reviewed several different alternative properties before we selected our, our application property. For various reasons, we didn't receive responses, or we received no's that they weren't interested. So we, we have been pursuing a site in this area since 2017, and when we made the application, this was the only site that was available to us. And then, well into the review, we did go back and review these alternative locations, even though they were at a property that previously had not responded to us. So I feel like we have made a good faith effort here to review the alternative locations. And then regarding the comments of the snow, the snowbank entrance, that is the actual alternative location two. That is that location, so we did review that area. That's the, the one that has a little bit of a clearing over here. So this alternative location two, this is the entrance right here, but as you can see, we're right by Clove Creek, and even though the entrance is here, we would still need to extend an access drive in here and still clear this area for the equipment compound and to fit the tower. And again, we're closer in proximity to Route 9, and as you can see, the industrial use to the south, clearing out these trees would then open up views to the south. So again, our reason for pointing down this was not that it would be more expensive for the applicant to build this, but that, based on other comments we received from the board about its perceived impacts toward the Route 9 gateway corridor, that this would actually create greater impacts to that gateway corridor. Now, it is a push and a pull now, because maybe this location would have been a little bit further away from Carol Lane, but now that's the planning board has to weigh and balance the interests of the entire community and the gateway corridor and Carol Lane. We would also note that our application, or our site is 1,000 feet away from the closest residence at Carol Lane, so we are a little bit further away still at our current location, and we have intervening industrial uses in between. However, we are sensitive to the fact that people have commented regarding the visibility of the tower. The applicants would like to make a contribution to the town for an off-site planting fund or an off-site tree fund. Maybe we can provide some money for the town so that it can provide trees, whether they be on the residence properties at Carol Lane directly or in other places along Route 9 or maybe behind the Battery Monument, and we can provide some trees that, you know, it'll take some time to grow in, but once they grow in, maybe they'll provide some additional screening and help block or mitigate the views of the tower. And then regarding the other properties that were reviewed, the RF justification report, particularly the DOT substation, Thale Industries and the Fishkill properties, it was noted in our RF engineers' report that going further north of the alternate location two, kind of in the area where alternate location one is and these other two properties, that would be too far north where we would get some loss of coverage. And the issue with that is, is even if we don't fill in the gap perfectly, the more and more gap that we leave open is more and more likely that there will be a need for another tower in this area. So again, our goal is to put the one tower up that will fill Verizon's needs. We believe it will also fill the needs for the other carriers should they have a need in this area, but we're also trying to pick a location that reduces the proliferation of towers in the town so that you're not putting two towers along this gateway corridor.
Thank you. Now, the rules be one turn at the microphone, sorry. So Dominic, I wanted to ask you for your thoughts about the public hearing this evening.
Yes, I think at this point, you know, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the public on the application as it's been presented to the board. And so the board had a public hearing, started last month, it's continued it this month, and I would think that the public has had a full and fair opportunity to comment. There's obviously also the potential for submitting additional written comments for anyone who's here or anyone who else who's interested in the project. So at this point, my recommendation would be that the board consider closing the public hearing. You also have to bear in mind that the applicant has obviously agreed to address any outstanding comments as part of their ongoing submission, but there is also the shot clock which is running, which is 150-day period. It's actually expiring this month, and that is determinative as to whether or not there has been a reasonable opportunity for the board to be considering and making decisions regarding the application. I think that the board should also ask the applicant for an extension of that, because obviously you're not at a point where you're ready to make a decision, and I know that this application is on for later in the agenda as to other potential actions, but I... actions, but in closing the public hearing and accepting written comments for a period that you deem appropriate, I think the, it's also appropriate to ask the applicant to consider extending that shot clock for a minimum of one month at this point, so that the application could then be considered at the September meeting.
And that will definitely be a part of our discussion during the project review.
Yeah, but I'm just tying them together because I think they're somewhat related.
So I would like to ask the board at this point.
Can I ask one question before we go to?
Absolutely.
So this last location we're talking about here, what was the RF situation with that? What was the coverage situation with that one?
So again, to maintain a similar coverage, we would have to build 190-foot tower, and that's not due to further located north, that's just due to the change in elevation. So because we're losing ground elevation at this alternate location, too, we'd have to build a taller tower to make up that difference in height. As you know, the board hired its own radio frequency consultant to review our facility. In fact, he confirmed that our height was the minimum height, but he actually suggested that we should probably build the tower another 10 or 20 feet taller to, you know, to really clear that minimum height. We are trying to balance the interests and make sure that we provide a tower that's minimally, you know, as short as possible so that we can provide minimal visibility of the tower. So essentially, yeah, the RF engineers, based on the change in elevation, determined that we would need approximately 40-foot-tall tower.
Okay. And did you lose any coverage in that? If you made it higher, would the coverage stay the same? Or, because the way I read it, it seemed like you would lose some coverage, but I'm not 100% sure. I want to make sure I understand.
Sure. So we would probably lose some coverage just by going a little bit further north. Again, where we are on our map is we were kind of at the very, very farthest north part of our search radius. The alternate location, too, is close enough that there probably wouldn't be that much difference in coverage just by going further north. The change in the coverage from alternate location, too, and necessitating the taller tower, is really the fact that we would need the 40 additional feet. The issue with that, though, is that that would now trigger a variance, because in the GB zoning district, we're limited to 185-foot tower, so it would require another variance. From a site acquisition standpoint, I think alternate location, too, was more ruled out on that aspect because of its proximity to the Clove Creek and the tree removal that would be required for that. It would, at the 190-foot tall, it would provide similar coverage, but now you require a 40-foot taller tower, and it's really, it's the tree removal in this area that I would caution against, because this tree removal would open up views not only of the tower, but of the mining operation that is currently screening.
Okay, thank you.
I have a thought here, if I may. I agree with you when you said that, pretty much the general consensus is that it's a location issue, and it's associated with the location issue is the visibility. But we've been discussing various different alternative locations, and they're contained in the documentation, but at all sorts of different places in the documentation. Is there any way we can create, for the benefit of the board as well as the benefit of the residents on Carol Lane, that we can create some kind of a simple sheet that says, here's all of the 10 or 12 locations that we looked at, and here is what the, you know, the criteria are that we use to evaluate the location, and then for each location, here is what we came up with in terms of why the location is not appropriate.
So the original document we submitted is called an alternative site analysis. That first one, the first barrier to entry is availability. So if no one's willing to offer us a lease, then the site's not reviewed further. So the vast majority of sites, when we first came at our first filing, they had all said no or gave us no response, and that's over the course of seven years. So we chose our application site based on, initially, it was the only site that was available to us. We also felt the fact that the site was on already developed property that wouldn't require tree removal or disturbing raw land, that those were all benefits as well. But I can try to put something together, but as far as what we reviewed from more than just availability, it's really just these two sites, and I could consolidate the RF letter that we submitted in the application as well as this alternative site analysis, but essentially the answers are, it'd be more impactful from an environmental standpoint, from a land use standpoint, from a zoning standpoint, and we require a taller tower. But we can try to provide something in our next submission.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that it's difficult for me to understand, other than if, from a business perspective, people have other options for the development of their property, but it's difficult for me to understand, once people recognize that what the total value is of a lease to them, and that value is both at an annual level, and that value can be amortized over the next 30 years. So when somebody realizes that for, and I'll make the numbers up, for, you know, several hundred square feet of property, they can get $400,000 to $500,000 today for a 30- or 40-year lease, depending on the negotiations. It's difficult for me to think that people will not take a serious look at that in terms of volunteering their property. So it's more of an education and a, you know, if you talk to people for five years and they refuse to do this piece, but once people realize what the sums that may be involved in this, I would think that they would be more apt to provide a piece of their property.
So generally, when we pursue properties, the areas that we're offered are usually areas of the property that are underused or not being used at all. So that's the first area, because again, the cell tower, it doesn't, you know, close shop at night and go home. It's going to stay there as a permanent structure for probably 50 years. So whether a property owner is seeing the dollar signs and wants to maybe make a little bit of a change to their property or how they want to use it, that's their prerogative. But this particular property owner, with his active mining operation, he already has plans in place, and I don't know if it's more advantageous from a financial standpoint.
Okay. So any other comments from the board members? My suggestion this evening would be to close the public hearing and allow for a written comment period. My suggested date would be next Friday, August 16th, at noon. And I believe, Debbie, the applicant's package is available for download, right?
It's always online as we speak.
So what was presented and what we're reviewing tonight is available for download to the public.
Sure, you can blow it up on your own at home, sure.
No, I just, I want to make that.
Oh, no, it's, yes, they're always posted with the agendas, as well as on the public hearing page of the website.
So, you know, I would encourage those to download that file and review it, but any comments from the board? Yep. So is there a motion to close the public hearing for Homeland Towers Communications Tower, 73 Route 9, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, and allow for a written public comment period until noon Friday, August 16th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. This item will be, there will be a project review for this item later this evening, so we will be discussing this later. Next item on the agenda are requests for extensions of approval. Continental Commons Lot Line Realignment, Board to Review the Submission Made by Applicant's Representative on July 22nd, 2024, Requesting a Second 90-Day Extension of the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval. The Board adopted the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval on December 18th, 2023, and granted the first 90-day extension back on May 9th of this year, which is currently set to expire on September 10th. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. Lee Lefkowitz from Zarren and Steinmetz, on behalf of the applicant. We submitted the request for the second 90-day extension. The reason for the request is pretty simple. We actually have already satisfied the conditions for the lot line realignment and made our submission. We actually made our submission in early July, and we're asked to resubmit it, which we did last week. So it's been fully submitted, and we have satisfied all the conditions required there, so we're waiting for signatures on the plan and confirmation that everything's in order. But in abundance of caution, we sought this second 90-day extension, just in case there are any issues between now and when we would expect to have it signed so that we could have it filed. We hope to not need it. We hope everything gets resolved between now and September anyway, but to be safe, we wanted to extend that date, mindful that this was the last meeting before that that we could do so.
Understood. Thank you. Dominic, I'd like to ask your thoughts about?
Yeah, we have actually received the submission. You know, the purpose of what's undergoing now is engineering and final legal review to make sure that the conditions have been satisfied, you know. And so that is ongoing at this point, and, you know, it with, it's reasonable to request a 90-day extension just so that if additional time is needed between now and September 10th, then they have it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from CPL team? Any comments or questions from board members?
No.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to grant a 90-day extension of the preliminary and conditional final approval of the Lot Line Realignment for Continental Commons?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda, under requests for extension of approval, Duchess Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, Board to Review the Submission Made by Applicant's Representative on July 24th, 2024, Requesting a Six-Month Extension of the Resolution of Conditional Final Approval that was adopted by the Board on September 14th, 2023, and is currently set to expire on September 14th, 2024. Good evening.
Good evening. Jennifer Gray from the Law Firm of Keene &amp; Bean. Happy to see you all tonight. I am here for the Duchess Self-Storage Extension of Approval. We are seeking a six-month extension. As you just mentioned, we did receive conditional final approvals in September of last year. At this point, we believe all, if not, most if not all of the conditions have been met. The outstanding ones relate to the performance bond, the maintenance bond, and payment of fees. Just on last night's Town Board agenda, the Town Board did accept the bond estimate that was provided to the town several months ago, back in December of 2023. So at this point, now that we have confirmation of that bond estimate, we're able to provide drafts of the bonds for review, along with our compliance package for review, to make sure that all those conditions have been satisfied. So we are seeking a six-month extension to allow these last remaining items to be completed and reviewed, and we expect that compliance package to be submitted shortly.
Very good. Thank you. Dominic, I'd like to ask for your opinion once more about this extension.
Yes, it's entirely appropriate at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Any comments or thoughts from the CPL team? Didn't think so. Ask anyway.
Never seen this before.
Any thoughts or comments from the board?
I was at the meeting last night, at the Town Board meeting, they did accept their bonds for the performance bond, so I think we're moving in the right direction, so let's keep it going. I'd like to get this thing done.
Absolutely.
All right. Is there a motion to grant a six-month extension of the conditional final approval for the Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit for Duchess Self-Storage?
So moved.
Second.
Robbie, that's the second.
Robbie.
Any discussion from board members? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is under Request for Readoption of Approval. This is for 228 Osborne Hill Road and 9 Berghoff Drive Lot Line Realignment, Board to Review the Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on July 24th, 2024, Requesting a Readoption of the Resolution of Conditional Final Approval that was adopted by the Board on December 14th, 2023, and expired on June 14th, 2024. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, Members of the Board, Joseph Bono, BU010804, Route 9, Fishkill, for the applicants. As you can see in my correspondence, I got involved kind of at the 11th hour here with the applicants, trying to shepherd this through. Simply just did not quite have the time to get it done, but I think all relevant items are in place for us to get this over the finish line here. So we're just asking for a reasonable period of time. I would think 45 or 60 days should be just fine for us to wrap this up, given that it's the summertime. That's the long and the short of it.
Forty-five or sixty?
Yeah.
If I could interject, you actually need to get a reapproval because you're expired.
Yes, yes.
It's a different thing.
And so, if I may, you know.
Thank you, Dominic.
Yeah, the way that this would work would be, if the board is inclined, and I recommend that they do so, is that they would actually request a resolution be prepared for the September meeting.
Yes.
And basically, it would be considered and likely adopted at the September meeting, and that would essentially restart the entire clock.
Okay.
You know, and there's nothing stopping, you know, nothing would change in the resolution in terms of the condition, so there's nothing stopping you from working on satisfying those conditions in the interim, and, you know, the board then considering it at the September meeting, and that would authorize you to then submit all your materials for signature.
That works just fine for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my thought here was, my only question was, if nothing's changed, then why didn't you, why didn't it move forward?
He said he was retained.
Yeah, I was retained, really at the last minute to kind of help him out with this.
But that's, you know, that was the only thought I had, was what changed, right? Why didn't it move forward?
I can't speak to that. I only got in touch with the applicants probably in late May, and as we were getting our ducks in a row here, it became evident that we needed probably a little more time, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, and then thank you, Dominic. Any thoughts from the CPL team on this matter? Like to ask the board, any other questions or comments?
Sure, I would like to say, if we can for the next meeting, can you just update us on where you are with everything?
Absolutely.
Yep, because that'll be important for us to know as we readopt this, right?
Absolutely.
We want to make sure that things are actually going forward, right?
Sure.
If there are no other comments from the board members, is there a motion to authorize Dominic Cordisco to prepare a draft resolution of readoption of approval of Lot Line Realignment for 228 Osborne Hill Road and 9 Berghoff Drive for the Board's consideration at the September 12th Planning Board Meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from board members? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? No, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is under new submittal. This is for Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Design, 263 Route 9D and 14 Chorus Lane, Special Use Permit and Site Development Plan. The applicant is requesting Site Development Plan approval and Special Use Permit approval to restore the existing Duchess Manor building and to renovate it for use as staff offices and a visitor's center. The applicant is further proposing to reconfigure and improve the existing parking lot and landscape areas to support the proposed Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail and the existing trail system in the Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve, office use, and visitor's center to add a public rest house structure. office use, and visitor's center to add a public rest house structure. There will be no changes to the existing building or uses at 14 Chorus Lane where the Hudson Highland Fjord Trail staff offices are currently located. The applicant is seeking a certificate of appropriateness to alter the Duchess Manor, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The applicant may also be subject to the requirements of the Aqua For Protection Overlay Zone Regulations. The applicant will also be seeking rezoning from town board to rezone 14 Chorus Lane from R2A to RB. And for tonight, we are going to consider referring the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, town planner, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Duchess Junction Fire District for their review and comment. Also, the planning board will allow informal comments from the public after the discussion of this application. This application was presented to the board and the public at last month's meeting, but since the July meeting, the applicant has made the formal submittal. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, consultants, counsel. My name is Helen Moch with the Law Firm of Minster Moch. I'm land use and environmental counsel to Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail, Inc., a subsidiary of Scenic Hudson. With me tonight, to my left, is Amy Casalla, Executive Director of HHFT, and Erin Warner is here from AKRF. So as you said, Mr. Chairman, we were here on July 11th. We introduced the Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Improvement Project to the board. HHFT is proposing to restore Duchess Manor for use as a visitor's center and offices, reduce the footprint of the Duchess Manor by removing modern additions that were made to it over the years, adding a small rest house structure, parking, and landscaping. As you indicated, we submitted a formal application for site plan, special use permit, and a certificate of appropriateness. We included an environmental assessment form, the long form, with that application, and we are asking the board tonight to refer the application to its consultants and staff and other agencies for review and comment, and to circulate a notice of intent to serve as lead agency for review under SECR. Now, we understand that segmentation has been noted as a concern from certain members of the public, and so we thought it would be helpful to provide our analysis of this issue just very briefly. As the board knows, splitting a project into smaller projects to avoid a thorough environmental review, or to make a project appear less impactful, is considered improper segmentation. But where, like here, a project has independent utility and where there is no concern that there would be insufficient environmental review, there is not impermissible segmentation. The proposed Duchess Manor project provides offices, a visitor's center, parking, and a shuttle service to service existing trail users and improve safety. The project's purpose is independent of the trail and is needed even if the trail is never approved or never built. Environmental review is not being avoided here because the environmental impacts of the Duchess Manor project will be evaluated by this board as part of the Fishkill Approval Process. And secondly, the EIS that is being prepared for the trail with New York State Parks as lead agency will include the impacts of the Duchess Manor project when analyzing the impacts of the trail. So there is no avoidance or minimization of environmental review. And so, based on the law, we do not believe that there is improper segmentation, and it is our view that any claim for improper segmentation would not be successful. So again, we're asking the board tonight to take action on the matter before it, which is the Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Improvement Project, and circulate a notice of intent for lead agency. Now, Amy is here and has another beautiful presentation, which she's prepared to take you through, unless you would like to stop me here and have any discussion.
Is this a different presentation than the one presented at last month's meeting? Then go right ahead. This is a new application. It's our new submittal, so I would like to, please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. So it has some similar content, but it is new. So our goals for this evening, just to hear and answer any initial questions from the planning board on this application. I also see there's members of the public, in particular, the neighbors, who have shown up, and maybe they have any additional questions or comments that they would like to make this evening. And then, as Helen just said, requested planning board actions. So as a refresher, the site is 12.2 acres in total, and that's in two different lots right now. Duchess Manor is 6.6 in the restricted business zone, and 14 Chorus is 5.6 in the single-family residential R2A district. The Manor was operated as an event venue, hosting different retirement parties, weddings. I hear stories from everyone every time I mention Duchess Manor, for decades before our purchase in 2020. So the building, we've updated this with more nuance to all the dates of the additions. So these are the changes to the building over time, and you can see the growing footprint during the course of that time. Our proposal is to take that down to the original footprint. So that's a lot of impervious surface area that's going away and being reused for different purposes. Our restoration priorities remain the same, to repair and restore the existing walls, evaluate whether we can, we are actually hopeful that we can restore the brick to the natural brick and remove the paint, restore the brick back to, the roof back to slate, and restore or repair, trim details like those detailed woodwork. And this includes exposing historic windows that are encapsulated underneath the kitchen currently, that has this little vestibule stairs and little patio area off of what would have been the basement historic kitchen area. Building that up in accordance with this historic photo into the first floor to restore that architecture all the way through, restoring the back porch using some of the historic detail we can find from photos, as well as the existing footings that are still present underneath, again, one of the, it's in the subfloor, sub-basement underneath one of the additions. We've done some historic research with a historic, House History Report into the, what we would anticipate the wood detailing to be. That will help inform our restoration. And this just shows you some of these views of the Manor in the after condition from the east, which is coming from 90. That's the front entry as it currently stands. From the west, if you're viewing it from the back of the building with the restored patio. From the north, which is where there's currently a gazebo, and looking at that building, that there's a ballroom there right now. And then from the south, that's where the kitchen is built onto the side of the building. So we have submitted the paperwork, as Helen mentioned, for the certificate of appropriateness, looking at those exterior modifications. And then a separate file was put in from PRO Architects about the rest house. And this just shows you some rest house. If you have more detail in your packet. As for the landscape, just to walk you through some of the functions we have in mind for the landscape that we're trying to achieve in the site plan, we want to create a landscape for the visitor's center. That includes parking for the visitor's center, driveway, entry navigation signs, parking spaces for cars, buses, and we've given some thought to the RV question we received last meeting. Pathways, when you exit your vehicle, how do you access up towards the Manor? Space for shuttle drop-off and pickup. Again, that's part of this ability to serve the existing trails and drop people off if there's no more parking down at Breakneck Ridge, for example. And in the future, as a visitor's center, we would hope that we can have education programming, so space for school buses, drop-off and pickup, and then landscaping. We also want to create spaces and amenities to support future visitors. So that's the bathrooms, picnic space, food truck, and an event lawn for events or groups. People can just sit out on the lawn. And third, we want to create a landscape that reflects the design and values of the park. So restoring the natural hydrology has been given quite consideration. We've brought in an ecologist to study this, tailored to native plant palette with our landscape architects, scape landscape architects, and creating opportunities to engage visually with the river and the landscape to the, you know, down the hill. So the parking and circulation walks you through, but we have different circulation routes identified, and this conversation will advance. I know this is hard to read from where you're sitting in your packet as well, but we can look at how these circulations work for the shuttle to come in, a food truck, and so the flow should function well, and we'll look forward to conversations with the fire department. We've given thought to the ADA access to the building from both the front and the back of the building, and how ramps could be incorporated into the landscape to allow somebody to just seamlessly walk onto those porch areas and into the building. So that's incorporated in the design. Spaces and amenities for visitors, including this event lawn, which is at the back of the property. And again, that's using essentially space that's currently occupied by ballrooms and a little bit down the slope. But we studied for how you could fit an event tent in there, and that sort of drove the sizing of it. And this just says, from the back of the building, having this lawn space and then that back porch that's been restored to the building. And that could be in the future, we're a nonprofit, having a fundraiser there. The food trucks, shuttle drop-off, picnic tables, bathrooms, other functions we want to make sure we accommodate for visitors. And then the focus on nature. See, I walked you through the planting strategy last time. I won't go into that in great detail, but you know that it has multiple layers closer to the building versus further way towards the street, behind the building, restoring the meadow, and this is the bioswale. So I did want to talk a moment about this, just thinking about the planting plan here for the hydrology coming off of the lot and how it can move now back to the, down the hill towards the river, the way it historically went. And this shows some work that was done by our ecologist to see, this is a seasonal stream that historically was there, and you can see fill was put onto it. This is where the mountain is, 9D comes across. So the water wants to come here, and so it's finding, trying to find a way. But with the fill, it's been relocated and kind of, hydrology becomes a challenge. So what we've proposed to do is kind of reopen up that movement and through the bioswale, connect back to the seasonal stream to move the water down towards the river the way it historically had been. And you can just see some of the drawings about how that happens through the lot, catching and then relocating that water as it goes down through the bioswale. And that's the site plan at the end, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Before we go any further, I do want to go back to what was referenced in the opening comments regarding the letter, and the letter that was referenced early on was from Philip H. Gitlin from Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna Attorneys at Law, writing on behalf of the group Protect the Highlands, which the firm represents. I did want to ask Dominic for his input regarding that letter, as well as the applicant's comments, since it was brought up right at the front end. So I think it's appropriate to discuss that now.
Yes, and, you know, to be quite honest, we could have a lengthy discussion, and I could probably, you know, log you all into sleep in connection with that, you know, but I think, I, tell in aside, if I may, for just a moment, you know, as I started out my career working for the Department of Environmental Conservation many years ago, when I had shorter and not gray hair. And at that time, you know, the DEC, of course, you know, oversees and modifies, you know, the regulations regarding state environmental quality review, SECR, from time to time. But they also, you know, made it clear that the DEC, they would have a catchphrase, they would say that they are not the SECR police. In other words, they're not like in a position to like, you know, tell people whether or not, you know, to oversee or second guess SECR decisions that have been made. And so what we have here is a situation where the Fjords Trail is being, undergoing, you know, an extensive environmental review, and this particular project, you know, which the applicant is stating stands alone from the Fjords Trail, is being applied for now before the town and looking for the town's review of this application. And so you're kind of bound by the processes that you have. And so second guessing, you know, like another agency's determination as to whether or not they should or should not have included this aspect as part of their broader review isn't, like, there's no process in your code that says, well, you should tell this other agency that they need to do a better or more thorough job, or not to assume that they're not. And so the point is, is that, you know, you have your processes and your procedures that you have to follow, and you receive an application. In almost all circumstances, this board serves as lead agency for review of things that require this board's approval. And so I think it would be appropriate for the board to, once it's completed its review, its initial review, and also the consultants have completed their review, to consider circulating for lead agency. And at that point, if there's a dispute as to whether or not this is included or should be included as part of a broader review, then the other agencies, you know, can comment on it at that time, and there's a process. But I think at this point, you know, it's not clear from Mr. Gitlin's letter, at least to me, you know, like what the potential remedy would be for this board to do, other than, you know, to throw up its hands and do nothing at this point, and I don't think that that's an option under your code.
Okay.
Dominic, can I ask you, it seems to me that there's a difference between interdependencies and segmentations of a project. Each project has a set of prereqs and coreqs and-
And there may be-
A series of steps. Dependency, right, as part of the project management process at some point in time, where the projects, even though they're moving at their own pace as an independent project, there's going to be some discussions between the project leaders. And in this case, it seems to me, at least from the documentation at this point, that parking and the size of the parking lot associated with our, with this project here is, has some level of dependency on the requirements of that other project.
Mm-hmm.
So consequently, does that constitute segmentation, or can these projects move forward independently?
Yeah, the thing, and so segmentation has become, you know, this, you know, this byword that gets thrown around quite a bit. And it's, you know, it's often perceived as being something that is absolutely verboten, you know. And it's not really the case. As Helen had mentioned in her initial comments, you know, like, what's improper in segmentation, that can be improper in segmentation, is when you purposefully carve up a project into smaller bits so that if they were, if they were considered in the aggregate, you know, they would result in an environmental impact statement. And by carving them up into smaller bits, that you avoid doing a more detailed environmental review. The Fjords Trail is going through an- The Fjords Trail is going through an environmental impact statement process, and it has been. This board, you know, will make its own determinations as to whether or not there are significant environmental impacts associated with this application that's before you. So is it segmentation? It's possible it's segmentation, but the question really is, what's the result of that? Does it somehow, you know, require this board to, you know, minimize or have a limited look at the environmental impacts of what's technically before you? And bear in mind that the Fjords Trail itself is not before you. It's not something that, you know, that they need the town official approval for. What's before you is the site plan approval for the restoration of the Duchess Manor and how it relates to the trail. So the question, you know, I think, at this point, you know, you have your entire process ahead of you, you have all of your authority under the code to review and evaluate the impacts associated with what is within your jurisdiction.
Okay. All right. Dominic, thank you for providing that input before we've referred...
Did I put you to sleep? I'm sorry. No, no, you know, my wife says, "Tell me about Seeker again when she can't sleep."
No, thank you for providing your input before we've referred the application. But I think it was an important discussion.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Absolutely, no. After you.
I do have a question, Anthony, and for Dominic also. When we're referring this, should we consider including the New York State Office of Parks?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, because it's not on there.
Absolutely.
They are...
Yes, yes.
Can we put that onus on the applicant, because that's filed through the, through their system? I've never...
Cultural Resource Information System.
Cultural Resource Information is something that we have the applicant do.
Okay.
But yes, you can include that in your motion, yes.
But we will hear from, we will hear from that agency, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. We will hear from them, and you'll have that as part of your...
Okay.
And I'm also hoping that we should have, the board should have every report and every piece of information that's submitted to the Cultural Resource Information System for your record.
Because I think that will be important to at least for the public, and, you know, when it was brought up about segmentation, it's a good question. And if they get a chance to weigh in, if they think it's segmentation, then they need to weigh in, right?
Correct.
Because they are lead agency of the whole...
I was suggesting as much, as part of the lead agency circulation, that if another agency says, "Oh, wait a second, we've got this covered,"
Right, yes.
You know, then, then they have that opportunity to do so.
Okay, and that's, that was my point for that.
Yeah.
No, no, I think that was good, because I did want to go along the, through the board and see if they had any initial comments on this application this evening. It hasn't been referred yet, so I just, any other general comments, Felix? I don't know if you have any...
No, I mean, I think we're going in the right direction.
Any other formal or initial comments from board members?
No. My only, my only comment was, was related to the expansion of the parking, and I think there's a clear interdependency between that element of this particular project and the trail. Other than that, and then, but we can, we can, we can manage that under our process, right, from an EIS point of view.
Correct. You know, with the four corners of this site, you know, within this board's jurisdiction.
Yeah. So I did have a few initial comments. Could the applicant speak to the outreach to the residents at this point? What extent? Has there been any conversation? What has that been like at this point? I'd like to know.
Sure. Yes, we have had neighborhood meetings, started in May, and we have another one next week. So we've kind of tried to keep an open channel of communication and sharing information when we can before it comes out into a public realm like the board meeting. So that's been an open conversation, and I'm aware of neighbor concerns. I'll hear more next week, I'm sure, or this evening.
Okay. All right. I mean, there's certainly a number of topics on my mind that will be coming up here. I'm not going to list them all, but there's certainly ones that I'm sure the public will mention, as will our consultants and the board moving forward. But in the interest of time this evening, for new applications before our planning board, we do allow for informal public comments. Before I ask if there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak in regard to this application, I do want to make note of several correspondences from the public that we've received to this point. We did receive an email that was forwarded to us from Supervisor Albra, from Erin Sign Witson at 233 Route 9D, formerly 22 Chorus Lane. The email made mention of several concerns regarding the project, some of which are under this board's purview, some are not, but some of the topics of concern included groundwater impacts to nearby residents, proposed parking lot size, its proximity to adjacent property owners, and traffic. We did receive an email from Gretchen Dykstra. The email brought up concerns about the segmentation that we had discussed earlier this evening. And then I have already referenced the letter from Philip H. Gitlin from Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna Attorneys at Law. So at this time, I will ask if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak in regard to this item tonight. I do see some hands. So I will just note that the rules of conduct that I referenced earlier for the public hearing would apply here as well, one turn at the microphone and for up to four minutes. I do want to note that, to the public, that there will be a formal public hearing on this project at a future date if this application continues. So there will be other opportunities to speak in regard to this application. I would ask speakers to direct their comments to the board and refrain from Q and A session. We will ask the applicant to address all the substantive comments from the public with the subsequent submittals. So please raise your hand if you wish to speak, and when recognized, please come up to the podium. I see, yes, you, ma'am, in the orange. I may have got the color wrong, sorry about that.
So, thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you, Chairman, and all the board members. My name is Susan Peel. I'm a resident of Cold Spring. I'm deeply afraid for the future of our village, the preservation of the Hudson Highlands, and our quality of life, sorry, because of HHFT Inc.'s proposal for the Fjord Trail Visitor Center that's before you right now. As you may know, Cold Spring is a village of only 1,800 people, with one stoplight and a main street that dead-ends at the river. On seasonal sunny days, we already see thousands of visitors coming through, easily doubling our population. We can't handle the tourist traffic as it is. Years ago, many Phillips Town residents brought this to the attention of outside interests, among others, the state, DOT, Sinek Hudson, hoping for help. We were particularly concerned about someone being hit along New York State Route 9D, the only road leading northward from our village, which we count on for access to Beacon, Route 9, Route 84, the other side of the river, and which, in the event of an emergency at Indian Point, is our evacuation route. Sinek Hudson initially took an interest in planning a trail to get folks safely off the road, but rather than helping to mitigate unsafe congestion, in 2020, Sinek Hudson formed a subsidiary, HHFT Inc., for the sole purpose of building and maintaining a world-class linear park. In other words, there will be no visitor's center without the Fjord Trail. There will be no offices without the Fjord Trail. Sinek Hudson has further stated that their trail is capable of transforming Route 9D from a dangerous high-speed thoroughfare into a multimodal recreational corridor. Their plan also includes up to seven paid parking lots totaling 674 cars with two possible roundabouts along 9D. Construction will last over eight years, as the most southern point entry, Cold Spring, would devolve from a village to a concierge service with their proposal. On their website, Sinek Hudson boasts that in 2020, HHFT purchased the former Duchess Manor on Route 9D to serve as the future visitor's center and main entrance onto their park. This is the proposal that is before you now. In frustration that the structure is before your board and not ours, I reached out to our mayor this afternoon. I wrote, "Dear Mayor Foley, are you planning to go, planning on going to the Fishkill Planning Board meeting tonight, where the HHFT Visitor Center will be discussed independently of its connection to the rest of the Fjord Trail?" The mayor's answer, "The supervisor of Phillips Town, Mayor Winward of Nelsonville, and I deeply resent the way HHFT is encouraging the interference of other municipalities elected in our self-rule determination in Phillips Town, particularly when those determinations have no impact on those municipalities. As such, and rightly so, we will not be imposing ourselves on the process and determinations of municipalities outside of Phillips Town. I'm standing here before you, the members of the Phillips Town Planning Board, to ask, who is looking out for our interests and for the interests of other municipalities' home rules, therefore their residents' rights, along the entire stretch of this trail, when HHFT Inc. is bringing only their visitor's center, which in their words, is the main entrance to the Fjord Trail solely before this board? Thank you for your attention to this matter. I deeply appreciate the chance to speak. Susan Peel." And these are some of the concerns that will arise from the, from the proposed Fjord Trail that encompass the entire areas, and I'll be emailing this to...
Or you can, yeah, I was going to say, or you can give it to Debbie, and she will distribute to the board.
You scribbled on it?
That's okay. That's okay with you, it's okay with me.
Okay. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you. I did see, yes, you, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I am Sue Weyvada of Beacon, formerly of Phillips Town, so I'm very familiar with the Ford Trail Plan over the last 10 years, and I've been attending meetings of it for the last two or three years. I'm not talking about segmentation here. I'm talking about having a holistic view of parking along the trail, specifically as it relates to Duchess Manor and Chorus Lane northward. My observation over the last few years is that the trail is not planned in full yet. There are multiple options and routes at different points in the trail from the Cold Spring element and then the Beacon element. Is it on Route 9? Is it on, is it on Route 9D? Is it going to go down by the river? We don't know yet. But there are plans for parking, parking at Duchess Manor, parking possibly at Hartsuk Lane, possibly at the Notch and Forest, Forest Hill, and then, of course, Denning Point, probably the transfer station and the railroad. We're talking in a 1.1-mile segment from Hartsuk Lane to the Notch, 200 to 3, 200 to 400 parking spots. That's crazy on Route 9D. It's not going to be a route for people, residents or commercial traffic. It's going to be a park, a parking lot. And it kind of reminds me of a song Joni Mitchell once sang, which, that's not what that denial is about. We're not a parking lot. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Did you turn the audio on for me?
I can try, that's not something I...
Am I speaking into the microphone enough this evening? Okay, sorry. Good evening.
Thank you so much for the time to speak tonight. My name's Erin Sign Witson. I reside at 233 Route 9D, which was previously known as 22 Chorus Lane, which is two doors down from 14 Chorus Lane. The proposed plan in front of you that you'll be reviewing is something that's long in the making. The conversation about this trail goes back 10 years. Our family has been involved in conversations with Sinek Hudson that goes back as far as 2013. You mentioned our meetings with HHFT. The most recent one, as Amy referred to, was in May. The reason why that meeting came to be is that we found out on our own, through the grapevine, that the Hartsuk Lane, which is called the Wade Lot, was going to be built across the street in virgin land. At the time, it was 120 spots. Now I heard it's been downgraded to 90, so say 90 to 120 spots across the street, which was very alarming to us, having it so close to our home. The impact of, from an environmental standpoint, impact from traffic, as you've heard from previous statements and emails before. We had a meeting as a consequence of that, as a neighborhood, with HHFT. After that meeting, we then discovered that there was going to be this expansive lot built off of the Duchess Manor. The plan that you have in place with, refers to that lot as a reconfiguration, which implies it's going to be moving some things around. It's not just a reconfiguration, it is a massive expansion, which will exceed right adjacent to our front yard. There's two residences at the base of that, at that lot. This is involved into an enormous-sized parking lot that in just two years has changed dramatically from the original plans that were in place. This parking lot could yield up between 180 and 200 spots. The one across the street that I referenced at Hartsuk is another 90 to 100 spots, and the one about .8 miles down the road that was earlier mentioned is, again, 80 to 100 spots. It's massive. The Duchess Manor one, as I mentioned, with the reconfiguration, what they're going to have to do in the request for this rezoning at 14 Chorus Lane is not just about operating offices. There's a massive lot in front that was up on the, it was up in the slide that Amy had had up there. That is currently a field. It's at the bottom of a hill that's lower than Duchess Manor. This section of the parking lot is going to be the largest section of that parking lot. They're going to be shifting it around, and most of that volume will come down there. This is not only to provide, the zoning is to provide them this ability to operate that lot. And as it stands today, that manor lot, where it is now, is 500 feet away from our home. If this parking lot gets passed, it's going to be less than 100 yards from our home. It's right there. We have high concerns about noise, increased noise, trespassing, traffic, light pollution from lights installed, our safety, and then the environmental impacts. For the sake of time, I'm going to zero in on the water, our drinking water, which is one of our main concerns.
One minute.
The impact of bringing in hundreds and hundreds of thousands, or thousands of truckloads to fill the, and to scale that land up for that parking lot is a major concern in terms of unstable earth and the rainfall, from the rainfall that we're having lately. The materials that are planned for the building of the parking lot from impervious asphalt to perceive better materials, such as pervious asphalt and crushed gravel, these items, although better, still have a lot of management. How are you going to be containing weeds? How are you going to be maintaining the pervious asphalt? So what are we asking the board today? We're asking to reconsider the zoning. The impact of this lot is out of character for the current zoning. The natural barrier that has separated us from commercial is going to go away. This goes against our right to privacy and the quality of our life. There is existing lots currently in behind the manor that they could utilize. Taking down the expansion of the manor is going to open up more property. Why can't we look at reconfiguring the parking lot on the land that currently exists today? Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you.
Good evening.
Well, here we are. I'm from Cold Spring, and this is actually a much larger board than I'm used to seeing than we have down there. I actually sent an email this afternoon. I don't, I sent it kind of later in the afternoon, so I don't think it made it through to your desk yet.
I didn't catch your name?
Andrew Ball, H I L R.
Thank you.
And it didn't reach my...
Yeah, so I'd like to take the opportunity just to read that right now.
And I would encourage you to send, I'm not going to...
And they have an intention...
I would encourage you, yeah, if you, if you don't have it, Debbie, I would encourage you to resend it.
Okay, I'll do that. So I'm commenting regarding the application of Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Inc. for a special permit, site plan approval, and a certificate of appropriateness in connection with a proposed restoration of Duchess Manor and related improvements designed, amongst other things, to, one, serve as offices for the applicant and a visitor center, expand the parking area, add a public restroom structure, and establish a shuttle bus service from Duchess Manor to up to seven parking areas and nine shuttle stops located within the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail system. Fjord Trail system. The expanded parking alone at Duchess Manor would constitute 26.5 to 30% of total parking spots available within that system, per the applicant's own RFP. It is clear and obvious from only a cursory research that this project does not have close to sufficient independent utility from the larger phased project for the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail currently under SECRE review on behalf of the same applicant before you now. It is clearly and demonstrably substantially part of the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail. Amongst other plentiful evidence of this is the information stated in the applicant's FEAF, Section 3D, all of the, and they say, well, all of the parks mentioned in that section are integral to the larger Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail. And it should not escape your notice that the very description of this meeting tonight, posted on the planning board's agenda, also acknowledges the same thing. It says, "The applicant is further proposing to reconfigure and improve the existing parking lot and landscaped areas to support the proposed Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail." As you are by now no doubt aware, this approval, this proposal, if approved, could possibly place your board in significant legal jeopardy. I urge the planning board to ignore the clever entreaties that the applicant will no doubt make to issue the requested permits and approvals, and to instead carefully and dutifully, dutifully examine the application before you, fully mindful of your obligations, your obligations, to act in accordance with the requirements of SECRE. And just a couple of other comments arising from the initial presentation this evening. I do dispute the Hudson Highland Fjord Trails Council's contention about whether or not this is segmentation. And I'm also curious, curious, about how that even came up in the presentation, considering that, to the best of my knowledge, none of that was brought to the Fjord Trails' attention. It's only been in submissions to this board. And just one more thing. I don't think it's fair to minimize the importance of SECRE. Thank you. It's the only thing we've got. I think it's kind of cavalier to say, oh, well, we don't want to send you to sleep about this. This is what is helping us to navigate this project and its impact on us, which we care deeply about in terms of the places where we live, and the history, and the environmental beauty of this area. So I don't take SECRE lightly, and I don't think it's fair to do that. One more quick thing. Excuse me. Oh, yeah, just a little word of caution, because we've been through this in Cold Spring and throughout the whole genesis of this project. People are initially very taken by the idea of what this may represent and the way that it's presented as, you know, a great opportunity, and it has all of these equitable aspects. But I urge you, all of you, not to be taken in by the, you know, the pretty drawings and the pleasant renderings, but take a good, hard look at what the underpinnings of this project are. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I see a hand all the way in the back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. The four minutes is a luxury. At the MTA, where you get two minutes, and it's a little tough to get what you want to say.
And we encourage written comments, emailed comments, you know, if you don't get it all in, please, it is important to this board to hear your input.
Appreciate that. Thank you. My name's Dave Mirande. I live in Cold Spring. I'm the president of the Protect the Highlands Group, and I'm here tonight representing them. We oppose the Hudson Highland Fjord Trail as proposed in the application submitted by the HHFT that you are discussing tonight. I'd like to emphasize that we're opposed to the Fjord Trail as proposed and not the concept of a safe trail connecting Beacon and Cold Spring. I am the former three-term mayor of Cold Spring and before that a councilman on the Phillips Town Town Board. Also during my 10 years mayor, I was a member of the Fjord Trail Steering Committee, and as a councilman, I was on the, I was the board liaison to the planning board. Well, let this say, I'm fairly well-versed in land use laws and the history of the Fjord Trail. The Protect the Highlands Group is very concerned of the negative impacts this now major attraction will have on the quality of life and environment of our area. As I'm sure you know, the Fjord Trail is approximately seven and a half miles connecting Cold Spring and Beacon. This once simple, community-packed trail has morphed into something much grander with elevated boardwalks, a bridge spanning Metro North Railroad, a massive concrete overlook at the foot of Breakneck Mountain, and expanded in new parking lots to accommodate the large number of new visitors anticipated by this grand attraction. Duchess Manor has always been shown as the center of this trail. The master plan and all conversations and propaganda from HHFT indicate that Duchess Manor will be the visitor's center, parking lot and hub of their proposed shuttle system. HHFT's plan to mitigate the sizable increase in visitation depends on Duchess Manor. This application is a clear case of illegal segmentation. HHFT will claim that improvements to the building and expansion of the parking lot are for the existing trails and that shuttles will bring visitors to those trails. But you cannot ignore all of their past presentations and literature. Duchess Manor was purchased specifically to be used as a visitor's center, parking lot and shuttle service by the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail, a subsidiary of Sinek Hudson, specifically for the Fjord Trail, and as such, this application should not be reviewed separately but included in all reviews and permitting required for the entire seven and a half mile project. HHFT is proposing the expansion of existing parking lots, constructing new ones, and even constructing roundabouts on Route 9, 9D, because they are expecting thousands of new visitors, visitors drawn to the area by their project. All land use changes need to be incorporated and not segmented for ease of approvals.
One minute. I'm sorry.
With any research into this project, it will be crystal clear that the true purpose of this application, it would be true, the true purpose of this application. It would be naive to believe it's for existing trails. I'd ask you to please go to the Protect the Highlands website, where we clearly lay out our argument against the proposed trail, and we have posted hundreds of pages of documents supporting our concerns. The Protect the Highlands Group asks you to please do the necessary research before accepting this application. Duchess Manor is an integral part of the Fjord Trail and should be treated as such. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate your work.
Thank you. I do see, yes, your hand is up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My first time. I'm Hattie Parsia. My husband and I moved into our home at 2 Hartsuk Lane this summer of 2010 with our two small children. The house offers views of the Hudson River and Bannerman Castle. It's been our happy place and our forever home. Over the years, we've seen the rise of visitors to the area and how that has impacted our privacy and security. Often, folks drive up to our house requesting views of the castle or ask about access. When we haven't been here, our neighbor has spotted strangers hanging out in our backyard. And when the hikes got super popular during the pandemic, folks were parked outside our house tailgating. When HHFT came along with their mission to support the community by managing the surge of hikers along 9D, we welcomed it. We supported their mission to improve the safety and flow of visitors. But we feel that over time, the mission and scale have wildly morphed, and rather than managing the volume of visitors, they are looking to increase it exponentially and turn the corridor between the towns of Cold Spring and Beacon into a high-traffic Disneyland for a hiking community in the Northeast. The crowd estimates are mind-boggling and frightening, 205,000 on the low end, 1.1 million on the high end. The project is anticipating parking spots all along 9D, including Wade Lot just across our front yard. And all sides are happy place will be confronted by hikers and tailgaters, and with them, noise, traffic, pollution, garbage, trespassing, safety concerns, and potentially crime, too. I can't imagine the droves of strangers coming to our property for quick access to the castle or being confronted by a lost hiker. Who wants to wait for a shuttle bus when you can just walk across 9D for quick access to the trail? And what protects us from HHFT building that access from 8 Hartsuk, the home they purchased next door, or creating another trail in the parkland between our homes on Hartsuk? Our safety and quality of life is at risk, and that is a deep and serious concern of mine and our neighbors. Let's please consider the entirety of their plans and reevaluate the scale of the project. Let's consider promoting the dozens of other trails in the area away from 9D that can accommodate the crowds. And let's not build parking lots in areas that directly impact the nearby residents' quality of life and their property values. It's also important to note that in the Duchess Manor environmental assessment form that HHFT completed, they answered no to the question, "Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels?" Page 7. This is not true based on the visitor projections. Also, when asked, "Will the proposed action produce noise that will exceed existing ambient noise levels during construction, operation, or both?" On page 8, they answered, "Only during construction." This needs to change to reflect the noise of the increased people at the visitation center parking and the increased traffic. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I do see a hand back.
Yeah, this is her speaking. Hi there. My name is Cynthia Kling. I live in Phillips Town. Lived in Cold Spring for 15 years. And coming to the meeting tonight, I just wanted to make a few comments. One, in terms of segmentation, I know that there are, first of all, this has been an extremely oblique process for those of us who live in the community. There are 14 endangered species there, and we don't know how they're going to deal with them in Cold Spring. We don't know how they're going to deal with them in Duchess Manor. We don't know how segmentation works in terms of that. We don't know how segmentation works in terms of traffic. But the one thing I came away from listening to their presentation was, visitors, visitors, visitors. What is in it for the people who live in the historic village of Cold Spring? I'm so resounding with your, you know, rebel, revolutionary up there. The people who made these decisions, initially Sinek Hudson, were all people who did not live in the village of Cold Spring, didn't even have houses in the village of Cold Spring. So I understand why they're perfectly happy with visitors, visitors, visitors to their new transcendent trail, but I don't understand how they can think about what this will do to the historic village of Cold Spring. Thank you for your time.
Any other hands or anybody else from the public wishes to speak? So we, this has not been referred to our consultants at this time, so I'd just like to ask the board if they have any additional thoughts or comments at this time. Any initial thoughts from CPL or Dominic, anything that we fail to...
No, I think, you know, there'll be plenty of opportunity to discuss process and, you know, the board's authority in reviewing environmental impacts as the project unfolds. And at this point, I think it would be appropriate for the board to refer this to its consultants so that they could review and comment back to the board at their September meeting.
Yeah, and I believe the applicant had also requested that the board declare itself lead agency. We are not in the position to do that this evening.
You haven't had a review, the benefit of a review from CPL in particular.
I agree. I just want to raise that, raise that comment. Okay.
Sure. Sure. It's a comment.
Just a point of clarification. I wasn't requesting that you declare lead agency. I was requesting that you circulate a notice of intent to be lead agency. So it wouldn't, you wouldn't do that. Two different things.
If I may, at this point, you know, the board hasn't had the benefit of CPL's review of the application materials, including the EAF. Typically, they would conduct their review and make sure that the EAF, you know, is representative of the project and is accurate, not to say that it's not, but they haven't even reviewed it yet. So unfortunately, they, you know, I think the board would like to refer this formally now to CPL for their review.
I understand. I just wanted to clarify what the request was. Thank you.
And if I could just chime in, I think one of the concerns about CPL being able to do a review is to make sure all the information, as many reports as possible, is included so that what the board ultimately sends out to the other agencies is as informative as it can be.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Debbie, I think you were out. I was going to ask if the applicant had submitted the required application fees and...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. So at this point, I will ask the board if there's a motion to accept the application for the proposed Duchess Manor restoration and site design, and to refer the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, town planner, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and New York State Office of Parks and Historic Preservation, and the Duchess Junction Fire District for their review and comment.
So moved, but I want to say something before we continue. Yeah, you can second and second. Thank you.
All right, we have a second, but go ahead, go ahead. I was going to ask for discussion anyway.
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to make it clear to anybody out there, we take SECRE very seriously. We never take it lightly. So, you know, I know our attorney kind of said that in jest, and it was just in jest. This is a very serious board. We don't take anything lightly. Okay? So I just want that to be clear. Also, I just wanted to ask the question, because I am, I know what you've said about segmentation, and I keep hearing what everybody else is saying. It's all over the place. I know we're going to refer to the state parks. Should we ask them anything about what they consider if we should be able to take this independently? I mean, I think at this point, it's in their court as far as the whole trail is concerned, and this is an integral part of the trail, the way it looks. I mean, I understand it could be independent, but it's a big part of it. And I think it's important that we get this question settled. Because if they feel, you know, I think we should at least put the question out to them and let them know that we're concerned about this, at least I am, because if it really should be in their court, then I want it in their court. If it should be something that we review independently, then that's fine, but I would love to hear from them.
Yeah. No, absolutely. And that was, you know, what I was suggesting earlier in connection with the circulation for lead agency. When it comes to that point, the State Office of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation will receive notice, and they'll receive all of the application materials. And, you know, the point of that notice, and it will be spelled out very clearly, is that this application, you know, and as it relates to the Hudson Highlands Fjords Trail, is being considered, proposed to be considered by the Town of Fishkill Planning Board as lead agency for this Duchess Manor component of that. And so as a result, like, they will have an opportunity to say, either, yes, you should be a lead agency for the review of the Duchess Manor proposal, or no, we have this included as part of our overall application. Now bear in mind, you know, and let's just be clear about that, like, if that's the case, if New York State Office of Parks says that they're reviewing it as part of their EIS process, it actually is severely limiting as to this board's authority to review environmental impacts associated with this. This board at that point would have to rely on whatever environmental review is done by New York State, and then your authority over this project would be primarily limited to engineering and zoning compliance issues. So in terms of setbacks, you know, and other technical, setbacks in stormwater would be...
Acute for overlay.
You know, would be very, you know, limited in terms of your authority. I'm not sure that that's actually a position that this board would want, to be able to have some more forceful say, you know, and in review as to the environmental impacts to the Town of Fishkill and your residents in connection with this. So be careful what you ask.
What you're saying, it's a two-edged sword here. Does it, does it make sense for us to, one of the things that I was initially concerned about was the interrelationship from a parking point of view, but I've heard at least three or four more interdependencies, traffic, water... or four more interdependencies, traffic, water, right, hydrology, et cetera, between this particular project and the HHFT. So does it make sense, as you folks start doing your analysis, to make a list of those interdependencies?
Yeah.
Call them out?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, well, Don, I understand what you're saying, I'm not really concerned about our authority on it, I'm really concerned about the overall project. Of course, I always like to maintain control, right? But my other concern is that, I don't think, I don't know, I haven't seen any of this stuff, I don't know if they even consider it. I don't even know if it's on their radar. Because they've been doing, they're at a draft EIS right now, so that's where they're at right now with their review process. So I'm not sure if they're even considering what's happening here.
Who's the "they"?
The New York State Department.
Yeah, well, we'll either get a response, or we'll get their consent, or we'll get, you know, clarification from State Office.
And when can we, we do that, now when we refer it out, we'll let them know?
Yeah, that would be probably, I mean, so at this point, you know, the board's consultants haven't formally reviewed the application yet, they haven't provided their comments to the board.
Right.
You know, if they're, if the application is in sufficient form so that the board could authorize circulation for lead agency, that's when that would come. It wouldn't be any sooner than the September meeting, you know.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm just, that's my concern. I guess we can accept this application.
Any other comments from the board? All right, I did make a motion, it was moved, it was seconded, so if there's no more discussion, all in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Want to oppose?
Yeah.
Abstain? None? Motion passes six, one.
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, let's, let's take a five-minute break at this point before we get into our next item. We'll return, it looks like it is eight fifty-four. We'll return at nine o'clock. Next item on our agenda this evening, under project reviews, is Homeland Towers Communications Tower, Seventy-three Route Nine, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Good evening once again.
Good evening again, board. Just to respond more fully to Mr. Lopez's comment earlier, so here is an existing coverage map for, this is what existing coverage is today, this is without the proposed site. And then right here would be what our proposed site coverage is. As you can see, again, the goal is, is we're filling in the coverage along Route Nine and the surrounding areas, so that we eliminated this gap in coverage that was originally here and spotty coverage along Route Nine. We did do a comparison for what the coverage would be from the alternative sites. As you can see, the alternative site one, this was the one that was the further to the north, it really does lose the coverage here, and so we don't connect to the existing site that's down there. This creates another gap in coverage, and there's some spotty coverage along Route Nine still. And then alternate site two, this is the one that is closer to our current site, it still doesn't provide as dense coverage as our proposed site. If you see, this is the proposed site, it's more dense and more fully covered on Route Nine and in the surrounding areas. So, and again, these are with significantly taller towers. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, to put like a visual to what the loss of coverage is at these two alternative sites. And then we have the existing twenty-one megahertz coverage. Again, that would be our high band, so with a low band coverage, that's propagating a little bit further, but has less data capacity. This would be, the higher bandwidth would have more data capacity on this, but it's the same story, whereas our existing site kind of fills in along Route Nine a little bit better than the other two alternative sites would.
Okay. Thank you. I think the rest of your application, the updates were presented earlier, is there anything else that you wish to bring up at this point?
Uh, no, just, again, I would like to reiterate that we would like to make an offer to the town for a contribution of ten thousand dollars for off-site plantings. I think most of the comments we've heard from the public, as well as from your staff, are a visibility concern. So we feel if we can provide some off-site plantings, or at least funding for off-site plantings, while they may not provide benefit to provide plantings on our actual property, maybe the town with its powers can negotiate spots, whether it be behind the Battery Monument, closer to the Carol Lane residences, or along Route Nine, maybe some of these trees could help mitigate the concerns that we've heard tonight.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we had the update, I do want to turn to Liz and Christian for CPL's memo, I believe you sent the memo dated August first, twenty-twenty-four, so Liz and Christian, I will turn it over to you.
I didn't have, we didn't have any comments engineering-wise.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just going to touch on a few highlights in the memo. Let's see, I focused on the visual impact analysis, and there were a couple of things in there that I found that I would like to see improved. And one of them has to do, I went back through, I put some of the old record back in to reiterate some of the visual issues. But one of the things that I discovered is that there's a line right down the middle of the road, I'm trying to remember which comment this was, in the visual resource assessment, hang on, let me see if I can find it. Here we go. It's on page four of my memo. And it starts, it's number nine, some significant difficulties must be remedied with the VRA's Figure A2 View Shed map, one-mile radius, and it has to do with the fact that the map is at a certain scale, and the imagery is at a certain scale, and there's a pink line intended to show, let's see, it's to appropriately highlight the gateway corridor. But the problem is that when I tried to zoom in to get a better look at the blue blotches that indicate visibility, it was difficult to see. So I'm guessing that your folks can find a way of outlining that without the pink down the middle and maybe highlighting the edges of it, that'll allow the visibility areas to be more obvious for review, so.
Sure, we have no problem providing that, but it is a little bit kind of outside of the operation. So this map right here was really provided to select viewpoint locations so we could do the visibility analysis, absolutely it was.
No, no, I'm saying that's not the map I was thinking of, I'm sorry.
No, I know, it's the same map, it's just this one, for whatever reason, on the version that's on the screen right now, it just has this white block, so I can't, I can't look through the key.
Gotcha. Is that Figure A2?
Yeah, this is Figure A2, this is the one mile, the one before is the two mile.
Yep.
But again, they're both View Shed maps, again, I have no problem providing one that, where we can try to remove the pink line. But again, the purpose of this is, this is a computer algorithm to say where they think visibility will occur.
Right.
So we always go ahead and do the balloon test and take the actual photos to document the actual visibility, so I'm not really sure what, what that would provide as an additional review. Again, this, this is kind of like outdated, as in, we've already done the balloon test, we took the actual photos of the balloon, so we've already documented the visibility in the actual circumstances. This is really more of a document to help us select where those viewpoint locations should be taken.
Right, and I understand, I understand that you did take representative viewpoints, of course, and did simulations from certain locations, and that's fine. What I was trying to examine here is drive in the corridor, because it isn't just who's seeing this thing from their home, it's where are you seeing it as you're going along the road? So, so that was why I was hoping if there's a way to zoom in a little more and not have the pink highlight, and instead have it outlined so that the blue visibility aspects would be more obvious.
We can do that, again, but the blue visibility aspects are a computer saying, we think there may be visibility there. It's the actual photos that we've already taken that really should be reviewed regarding visibility of the facility.
Right, but is there blue stuff underneath the pink? That's what I can't figure out.
And I guess my, my question is, what's the request?
It's the roadway, it has to do with the scenic.
But you're reviewing, again, we'll provide it, I don't think we need to fight over this battle, I just want to highlight that this is something that's supposed to help you select viewpoint locations, which we've already done. Whether there's blue there or not, it may be visible, it may be not, that's the whole point of why we do the balloon test and not just the View Shed maps.
Okay.
What's it be different during the year, too?
What?
What you're asking for, would it be different during the year?
Absolutely, it would be actually, so what we did is we did, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just saying, what you're asking for, if you're driving on Route Nine?
Yeah.
Where would be visible, well, wouldn't it be different during different times of the year?
Well, the, right, I understand your question, the applicant's visual specialist very specifically focused on leaf off to enhance a higher level of visibility, so that part is already done. And, and all I'm looking for is, is, is to be able to see what happens when you're going along the road. That, that's all. And I understand it doesn't make sense to you, because you're, you're looking at specific viewpoints.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, the fact that there's blue there doesn't necessarily mean that there is visibility, and it doesn't put into context what the visibility is. It could be just the very top, very one inch of the pole might be visible where a blue area is, it may not be visible at all. This is just to help us make an educated guess on where we should put viewpoint locations, so to use this document and to say, oh, I see some blue here, so that means it's absolutely visible there, I think that's improper, that's all my comment is.
Okay. Well, so, why, why, then why was the pink, I, forget it.
So the pink was added because you requested us to highlight what the gateway corridor was, so this was information when you kept asking us to put additional information on the View Shed map? That, that's where that came from.
Yeah. I'm just going to go back to the issue of the two alternative sites that you looked at. In the middle of the conversation, it seemed like they were lower elevation, so it makes sense that a tower would have to be higher, up to a hundred and ninety feet. And, you know, spitballing, because we don't have all the information about that, I believe it's likely that the top of the tower at the lower sites might be at a very similar elevation to the top of the tower at the proposed project site.
Well, absolutely, that's the goal, is we're trying to maintain a similar centerline height as, as far as how the propagation can go.
Exactly. So I understand, oh, it would have to be a one-hundred-and-ninety-foot tower, and I understand that that would require variance, but it still remains that those sites aren't right near, like, neighborhoods, and a little neighborhood and a home. So especially, I guess it's the one that's not as far north. And I have to say, that map you're showing right now is a lot easier to read than the ones that you were showing before that have, I guess, like, blue and green highlighting, because, so I see the proposed site, even from this distance, and then I see two more going north, and I believe that you said the one that's immediately north of the site is Alternative Two?
Yeah.
Okay. So one thought that I had was whether it would help the board to know, now you know that the elevation at the top of that tower is just as high as the one at the proposed site, if that is something you'd have, like to have more analysis of. I realize that the comment was made that there would have to be a lot of trees removed, and I also understand from having been to a few cell tower sites, that the big push is that you've got to get some hefty machinery into the site, so you do have to clear a swath. But what's not clear to me is whether or not you would have to clear, like, the entire area. And even if you had to clear a decent swath, there could be plantings along the road that would buffer some of the view, just like I was talking about buffering the base of the tower, or showing the base of the tower to see how much of it there is to see. So I think it would be worth it to have that Alternative Two examined in some more detail, to find out exactly, you know, what, is there a way to sketch the amount of vegetation that would have to be removed? And give us some kind of a diagram that would say something like, you know, at a hundred and ninety feet, this is the top elevation, so that we can look and see, oh yeah, that's the same as on the site. And then I realize it would require variance. On the other hand, in this particular case, I'm wondering whether the board would like to consider it, because it is, it would be situated between a few business uses that, again, are well buffered from the road, they get their trucks in and out, they have plenty of vegetative coverage along the roadside. As, you know, maybe the reasoning, and if I can kind of go out on a limb here, the reasoning for getting a variance, which I believe it would be, what's, the top height is one-eighty-five, that you can have?
Yeah, correct.
So it would be a five-foot height variance.
But you also have setbacks related to the height of the tower from the roadway, so you would be crying a front or street setback, so we'd get an additional one. You also have the issue that we're closer to Clove Creek, so now you have environmental impacts, and there may be a wetland buffer to that Clove Creek, so we may have to be even closer to the roadway. And again, there's more environmental impacts just by being near that. And again, the full response that we gave isn't just visibility, it's environmental impacts, it's clearing hundreds of trees, there's no tree removal on our current site, and also our RF analysis shows that while it's a similar coverage, it is not as good a coverage as our current proposed site. And so, again, these maps show that there is less coverage and not as dense coverage along Route Nine. So from our standpoint, it's a worse site from a technical standpoint, it's a worse site from an environmental standpoint, and also, most of the comments, I do appreciate that there's been some comments from Carol Lane regarding visibility, but most of the comments that we received from you and from staff are regarding impacts to the gateway corridor. And so removing the trees to clear up the space for this tower would not only create a view of the tower along the gateway corridor, but it would open up views to the industrial use behind us, the mining operation. So from all of those standpoints, respectfully, I think it's a more intrusive site.
So I have a question, so this tower is going to be taller, you said, one-ninety feet?
A hundred and ninety feet.
Hundred and ninety.
At the other two alternative locations, at our current locations, a hundred and fifty feet.
A hundred and fifty, yeah. So this, so if it is a taller tower, does it need to be wider?
So not wider, no, the footprint of the tower would probably still be the same, it's more of that.
It will be, it will be bigger at the base, right?
A little bit bigger, but you still have the equipment.
It would be like thirty-eight inches or something that we had for the other one.
So it'll be larger than that, so the thirty-eight inches, that was for the flagpole, so that was more of like, the flagpole doesn't taper, it's straight up and down thirty-eight inches. A monopole does taper a bit, it's a little bit larger at the base, and then it comes up. up a little bit more narrow at the top.
Yeah, but this one, if it is 190, because it's taller than the 150, so it has to be wider at the base, though, right?
Correct, it has to be wider at the base, but again, most of the tree removal would be caused not just for the tower itself, it'd also be the ground equipment and the equipment compound, so we have to have an area that we're going to put the equipment that powers the antennas. So, with our current site, we have approximately, do the square footage, but I think we have like a 2,000-square-foot equipment compound. So, we would have to clear out space to provide...
I think it's, the compound itself on the proposed site, it's, I think it's 0.9 for the compound.
0.9?
0.9 acres.
Okay.
So, that will probably remain the same for the new tower?
And the thing that would change would be the driveway.
It may, but we'd have also the driveway, but again, the compound at our current site, there's no tree removal, so it's the trees that I'm talking about that would need to be removed for that square footage that we would need for not only the site access, for also the equipment compound that we're going to put all the ground equipment in, and then on top of that, if there's any additional need regarding any kind of like emergency vehicle turning, sometimes there is a requirement that we have a turning radius that would be sufficient enough for emergency vehicles. With our current site, the parking lot definitely allows for emergency vehicles to access the site, so we may have to do an even greater driveway or an even greater turning radius around the parking area. So, again, just from the standpoint that we have a site currently today that requires no tree removal, and it's on an already disturbed and developed site, we review this as being a more intrusive site from an environmental perspective.
And you also mentioned earlier, if you remove these trees, there'll be visibility to the inside of the mining and all that.
We believe it would, because the mining operations down here to the south, and then here you already have almost a little bit of a clearing, so we would have to clear, you know, at least 100 trees or more in this area just to fit in the tower and the access drive, and so then that opens up views of the mining operation along your gateway corridor. And again...
But it would be a short, you'd be looking down like a driveway to see it, it wouldn't be wide open, like, I don't, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, I don't believe you'll be clearing all the trees on the roadside, but you're right, there is going to be like a, you know, driveway, a wide driveway with going in that people will be able to look in.
Right, but again, I don't even know where we can put this because of where Clove Creek is. So we'd also have to make sure we're in an area that wouldn't provide environmental impact that...
Right.
Can you just add to this? The owner has told me that there's a new access road planned for his plant, which you probably know, right? This is going to be closed where this is going to come in, where it's currently, the current entrance is, and the access is going to be moved, oops, oh no, that's the wrong map, sorry. Is going to be moved south to, across from Carol Lane, actually. And he has apparently plans. His concern was that we would go too close to the Route 9 corridor, it gets very steep there, and he had some plans for something that was going on up there.
I'm sorry, I really had trouble following that, because the graphics are kind of...
Yeah, well, this is a fairly narrow area.
Where is this Carol Lane access that you're talking about?
The plant that he's operating, the entrance is right here.
Right, I see, yeah, yeah.
That's being closed off, and the entrance is coming down here, this is Carol Lane, and he's building a new entrance here.
Is the entrance there because of moving the tower, or is it because of the plant application?
Plant operations. And safety, road safety, apparently there's a lot of, you know, sideline issues here, so he has plans to put the access drive here and close it on up there.
Help me walk back to how that, how does that affect doing the tower there?
There's not going to be an access here, is what I'm saying, we're going to come in from down here. And the concern here is that he, God, he has plans for this area.
That we know, yeah.
And his only way to get there is a long parallel basically to Route 9.
So, he wouldn't have a driveway right from Route 9 into there?
Apparently not.
He would come from Carol Lane to bring the tower in, to put the tower up there?
It's unrelated to the tower.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with that tower.
For his plant, for mining.
Well, I understand the mining thing, but that's a separate project, what, help me, I'm sorry if I'm being dense, but I'm not understanding, what does that have to do with the location of that?
Because it adds further constraints to this alternate location, too. So, we can't go too far close to Route 9, because there's already development area over here. So, we're sandwiched in between a stream and future development, and so the issue is, is that we may not have enough space to actually put this tower without creating an environmental impact to Clove Creek, and so from that standpoint, it's another reason why we don't think that this should be further pursued.
Okay, and the access that's there wouldn't be an access you could use to do the tower?
Correct, he's going to have it shut down. So, and again, access to do the tower, there's the construction of the tower, but then we're going to have to continually access the tower for site maintenance, for upgrades, the antennas upgrade probably every three to five years, so for continuous access to the site, this would be closed down and a larger access drive would come up, and that would kind of take away space that we could use in this area.
Okay, so that really wasn't an alternative? I mean, it sounds like it really isn't viable.
We agree.
I think that's what he's saying.
Okay.
Again, we didn't have carte blanche to just pick any place on this property, I mean, he's the property owner, these are the two that he said he would be willing to offer to us. As we showed, alternate location one, the one that's further north, our RF engineer showed that there would be a significant loss in coverage going that far north, and then this site, while there is still a loss in coverage, will admit that the more compelling reasons why we wouldn't pursue this are environmental-related as well as zoning-related.
Well, that's helpful. I just wanted to understand enough, ask enough questions so that the board could understand whether or not it's worth pursuing, so.
Absolutely. On that point...
Quick question, this knowledge or something crazy, like, where the original proposed area across from Carol Lane, you know, is the proposed area? I know that there's a pond there, and I don't know if that's like our tension pond for watering for mining?
Yeah, it's...
So, could that tower be pushed back further towards, back into the property, kind of where it is now, but back further?
Are you on the property that we're currently located, or on Clemente?
No, on the proposed...
So, that's where we are, so we're at the very extreme end of the property, that's why we need the variances that we're getting...
Drop back by the pond, is that what it is? I'm just saying, going back, you know, go away from Carol Lane, further away into the property, but you're saying that it drops down pretty far?
Correct, there's a change in elevation, why we can't go further this way, is also the development of the property, but yeah, there is a steep change in elevation here, and we're at the extreme rear, which that was our exact thought, because of these two buildings right here, again, we can screen at least the bottom half of the facility. The top half of the facility, it is a line of sight technology, so we have to have visibility to the roadway, but yeah, that was our thought to try to make it as far away as we can.
And is it also, I mean, for your guys' sake, I mean, I guess where you are there, I'm just looking at it in a building standpoint, like, you're closer to the utilities and other stuff that, because if you had to go somewhere different, you're going to have to bring transmission lines and everything into there.
Exactly.
You're going to be doing a lot of disturbance.
Exactly, so not only would we do the disturbance for the access drive, but we'd run the utility easement right along that.
Okay.
Good question. Dominic, I believe you were going to the point...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Broger, thank you, appreciate it. I just want to clarify, from my perspective, you know, what the board's role is in connection with the alternative site analysis, there's very specific provisions in Town Zoning Code that relate to this, and they do require that the applicant demonstrate an alternative site analysis. And it gets to the point of, like, basically due diligence and good faith efforts, right? In fact, good faith is actually mentioned in one of those sections regarding alternative site analysis, that show that there's been a good faith effort to determine whether or not, you know, they have looked at the potential for other alternative sites. That's the inquiry. The board is not, in my opinion, provided with the authority in the zoning code to say, "You must now go to this alternative site." It's really to identify that this, you know, has been an effort that they have gone through to identify the most appropriate site that's available to them. And that is also bolstered by the fact that Seeker itself, when you're dealing with private applicants that are not either states or counties or municipalities, says specifically that you can't require a private applicant to identify and go to an alternative site when that private applicant doesn't have, like, the right of eminent domain. If you did, if you, you know, if you were to say, "Oh, you must go to this site," and then the landowner became aware, you know, that you were directing an applicant, you know, to a particular site, well, you know, the landowner would say, "Yes, sure, I'll rent it to you," you know, "but at a level," so that would be, make the project unfeasible. So, you know, I think the question that you ultimately will have to determine, and you have to make a finding in connection with this as part of any potential approval that you would consider, is whether or not they've made a demonstration that, yes, they've done their alternative site analysis. And that's, I think, getting to your point of, like, what has been sufficient in terms of the material that's been presented.
Right, and we were working with some, you know, pretty small-scale maps or large-scale maps or whatever, but, so it was difficult to discern without, you know, asking a few questions, but that was the whole point.
Of course. Yeah, understood. Understood.
Liz, I know you were going through your letter, I don't know if you got...
I don't, I don't know, you know, that was the main remaining concern. Really, a lot of things are restated here, kind of for the record, looking ahead towards the end of this process. I think the applicant folks can respond to comments to the extent practicable, hang on just a second. I did have some comments on page six that I believe would be easy fixes for the record and for your folks, so on page six, item C, photo simulation C-13 and C-14, if those could be revised to show the bottoms of the pole.
But, I'm going to go to them, the reasons we don't show the bottoms of the pole is because they wouldn't be visible.
The mountain is behind them.
But there's other topography that kind of prevents the review of that, the view of that. I'll ask my, I'll ask my engineer to...
Ask them, because in other comparable pictures, that hillside that's showing is behind, it's the mountains behind everything, not, it's not in front, so that was the only reason I asked.
This one? This view?
Keep going, go to the next, yeah.
Well, yeah, but, okay, I can ask them, again...
That mountain is not in front of the tower, that's behind it.
Correct, but there is this topography that's right here, I'll ask them to confirm, I'll have them confirm it, but...
Well, the topography I can see, but there's a stretch, there's a length.
I'll ask them...
Above that little mound that the tower is in front of the hill behind it.
Right, but there's also vegetation that blocks the view, I'll ask them to confirm that this is accurate, but, again, I'll ask them to confirm.
Yeah, and I had made a comparison in the comment with photo simulation C-8 through C-11, C-16 to C-19. They were done that way, and these just weren't, so.
Well, those are different views, but I'll ask them to confirm if they're accurate, I believe this is the vegetation in front that's actually blocking the base of the pole, and again, this is including that the bottom half of the pole is painted brown design, so it also...
That one?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have everything in front of me, I review on screen, so.
So, yeah, this, again, when we did the monopole design...
Well, I see that there, yep.
And then we have, well, this is obviously an easier one, because you're looking right down our driveway, so there's no trees that interrupt the view.
So, the sequence is, can you go back to the other one? To the, on the site, okay, so is that the first view that you see?
What do you mean?
If you go back one more slide, it's the balloon?
Correct.
And then you have a series of three types of camouflage?
Well, yeah, this is the standard.
Okay.
This is the brown painted...
And then two-tone.
And then two-tone.
Okay.
And then I had them, what was requested...
And see how the two-tone, it's still, you know, light enough, it's in front of the hill, you can see a little bit.
I'll ask them to confirm, but...
Yeah, just have them take a look at those.
But I believe it's being blocked by the mound and the vegetation.
The little mound, yeah, but ask them if it's...
Oh, we'll ask them to confirm.
And then, I think I had some site plan comments, and one of them had to do with the fact that somehow the survey sheet, the existing conditions sheet, came out of the set, needs to be put back in. So, the rest of the comments are pretty easy site plan comments.
Yeah.
And then it's a matter of looking towards the meeting next time. If the board would like CPL to prepare a draft fully AAF Part 2, I guess, and possibly Part 3, and if you'd like us to prepare a draft, a determination of non-significance for your consideration next meeting.
Dominic, I know you made a very well-timed comment earlier, I know Liz just made a suggestion that was, wanted to get your thoughts on what Liz had just suggested as actions, potentially...
Yes, you know, I think, you know, those documents will help guide the board in its decision-making process, you know, and in particular, the Part 2, you know, will help frame, you know, whether or not there are potential significant impacts, or whether or not they've been addressed significantly, or substantially by the applicant. Having that document in front of you, I think, would be helpful at this point, you've had your public hearing, you've closed your public hearing, there is written comment that's coming in, but the applicant is also committed to responding to those comments as well. I think the applicants probably, I don't want to speak for them, but I assume that they'll be making a submission to respond to CPL's comments, you know, to address those suggestions and recommendations to complete the record that's before you. And at this point, you know, gearing up towards a determination of significance would be the appropriate next step for the board to consider. I would suggest that, you know, you anticipate, you know, reviewing those documents at the September meeting, but also, you know, requesting that the applicant extend the shot clock through the September meeting, so that you can continue on your, for using it twice in one application, but good faith efforts to review and process the application in a timely way.
Yeah, I think my initial thoughts regarding the shot clock extension may be to request two months. In that, next month, we would potentially evaluate an EAF document, a determination of significance, perhaps at October, be in a position to consider a resolution of some kind.
Of course.
So, that's, that's at least passibility.
That provides, yes, that's a better suggestion than mine.
So, that's why my thought would be, my thought would be a two-month extension, but I did want to get the board's input, because there was additions made to the visual resource assessment, I believe those were up on the screen, we did ask for the additional arrays to be shown, those were provided, although recognizing that only the first array is what is part of this application, but that was requested by this board.
Yeah, we saw them all last week.
And the alternative analysis was also added to in this meeting, so I do want to get the board's thoughts on both of those items, since those were the two main points that were brought up at last month's meeting, before we consider whether we're in a position to author... whether we're in a position to authorize draft EAF or determination of significance documents. So I open it up to the board for their thoughts on the new information that was provided. Has the, have the alternates been evaluated to the board's satisfaction? Thoughts on the, it seems like right now, the monopole tower with the two-tone color is the path, but I don't want to speak for the board. So I'd like to, please, I'd like to hear from, you know, each of you what your thoughts are about proceeding on this. So I'll go down the line. Kevin, I'll start with you.
Well, as I've alluded to earlier, I think that the applicant has made a really good-faith effort to analyze the alternatives that have been put on the table. I just don't know what the intensity is, has been of that particular effort in terms of looking for an alternative site that may in fact have the specific criteria that we need, the right height, the level of visibility that most of the homeowners or folks in that particular corridor can live with, and then proceeding with intensity to look for individual homeowners or property owners, I should say, that would be willing to participate and that would meet those criteria. So it's not, it's not, I'm not questioning the good-faith efforts that have been put forth. I just don't know whether we've done enough to look at alternatives.
So I think the purpose of the alternatives is to determine if the site is suitable, right? I guess, Dominic, to the level of extent of the alternates...
It requires them to show that this was not just the first site that they picked upon, it's just that it was included as part of a collection of potential sites that were evaluated for their availability and suitability, if you will. And like I said earlier, like the board does not have the legal authority to require them to, you know, go to an alternative site. It's more to show that this has been part of a comprehensive effort.
So I'm not sure what more could be asked of this board in that regard, at least, at least from my standpoint, but I, you know, I appreciate the comment. Fred?
I think we should just proceed and, I'm okay with it, I'm okay with everything. The alternative sites, everything else has been explained to us, all right? We picked out colors. I think we've done a great job to mitigate things as best we can, and let's move on.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Felix?
Yeah, no, I have to say that I'm actually pleased that the applicant has actually taken extra steps, because they had already reached out to different sites, and then they did it again when we asked them when they first came with the application. The fact that they went back to an owner after that owner had said that they weren't interested, but they did because we requested it, I really, I appreciate that from the applicant. I don't feel they even had to do that, but I think they took that extra step. I know that the residents on Carol Lane would rather not see it there, but it seems like at this point, that is the most viable spot that's out there, unfortunately. And nowadays, it's, if we want cell phones, you know, the only, the way to get rid of them is just throw away all your cell phones, nobody's doing that.
Don't do that.
So, you know, that's, you know, just throw them away. But I just have to say, I really appreciate the applicant and their team, because we've had other cellphone applicants in front of us that have not been as accommodating, and you've been the most accommodating applicants in front of us in going through everything, so I appreciate that.
Right.
So I really think they've done what they've had to do. Liz has put them through the wringer, okay? And I appreciate that, Liz, I really do, because we need that. And they've looked at every possible way to try to mitigate. I also like the fact that without us asking, they've actually offered to give money to plant trees and to try to even mitigate the, just the way things are viewed, so I appreciate that. So I think they've gone above and beyond what any cellphone applicant in front of us has ever done, so I think, I appreciate that, I think it's time to, you know, move this forward.
I'm also appreciating one other thing, that if we do move it farther away, farther north, we're probably going to have to have another cell tower coming in later on to fill in the gap.
Yeah, that's what we don't...
And we don't want another cellphone tower.
Thank you, Felix. Robbie?
Yeah, I agree with Fred and, yeah, Felix, and we should move forward, and I'm hoping by the next meeting, the applicant will have answered all the questions that came from the public hearing, so.
Appreciate that. Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree with what Felix was saying, and I think, like you said, I know that it just kind of, there was a thing there that there was only so far you can move north or south before you start to lose, you know, coverage and everything else, so I don't, like I said, I think you guys have done as good as you can do, you know, with the questions we're asking and everybody's been trying to present.
Thank you.
BJ?
Yeah, I am in agreement with all the comments made before and agreed to move forward, yeah.
Okay. So Dominic, a question for you about the shot clock, is that a motion that the board would have to make, or should we just...
It would be an offer, offer on the record from the applicant.
Yeah, we just put it on the record. I heard, we were originally thinking to the end of September, and we can always extend it again, but if the board would prefer to October, we can extend it to October 31st.
Okay.
And again, if we get to the October meeting and there is a need to extend it further and the application is reasonably progressing, we'll absolutely extend it further. We don't want to use the shot clock to force you to make a decision, but it's really just there to make sure the application reasonably progresses forward.
All right, so how about I try a couple of motions and see how those do, and then we'll discuss?
Absolutely.
So, okay, so I will throw out, is there a motion to authorize our consultants at CPL to prepare a draft EAF part two and part three for homeland towers, communication towers for the board's consideration at the September 12th, 2024 planning board meeting?
Second, third.
Any discussion?
I...
All right, all those in favor?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries.
So I think it would be coherent for the board to be looking at both the fully EAF parts two and three, and also a seeker negative declaration, you know, the notice, okay?
That's my, I'm going to try that motion, I'm going to try that motion next and see where that one goes.
Hope the part three won't be necessary.
Is there a motion to authorize our planning board attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to prepare a draft determination of significance, would be the correct term, for homeland towers, communication towers for the board's consideration at the September 12th, 2024 planning board meeting?
Well, if I may, like, wouldn't that be appropriately prepared by CPL? I mean, in connection with it...
I'll change that to CPL.
CPL does the seeker.
CPL, but the...
Are we doing the notice, and then you would do the resolution to adopt it? In other words, like a seeker?
We're taking a step.
The whole resolution? Okay, fine, okay.
Okay, my mistake, I will, the motion stands, switch out, planning board attorney, Dominic Cordisco, let's put in CPL. Same motion.
So moved.
All right, I got to move, and I heard, I think it was Bob, maybe, so Felix and Bob. Any other discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. So I think now that both of those motions have carried, I think at least my suggestion would be for a two-month extension, understanding that we would probably need at least the September meeting to go through those documents, and at least one more to move forward.
Absolutely, we'll happily accommodate. Like I said, we can extend it to October 31st. Should the board at the October meeting issue the negative declaration, I just remind the board that we still have to go back to the zoning board of appeals to get our variances before we come back for the special permit and site plan approval. So we will likely be discussing a further extension at that October meeting, which, as long as the application is reasonably progressing, we'd be happy to accommodate.
Yeah, and that's an important point, you know, because the zoning board of appeals cannot continue and finalize its processing of the application until this board, as lead agency, completes its environmental review. And once you do, then they can complete their process before the zoning board, and they either get their variances or they don't, you know, and so, you know, that may result in changes to the project or however that plays out. So you would not be, after all, in a position to be considering like preliminary or conditional final approval until that process is completed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Excellent, have a good night.
See you in a couple weeks there.
The final item on the agenda for this evening is a project review. Fishkill Commerce Center Site Development Plan, Flood Plains Development Permit and Freshwater Wetlands Water Course Water Body Permit. Board to review the site development plan, flood plain development permit and freshwater wetlands water course water body permit applications and supporting documentation that were accepted and referred at the July 11th, 2024 planning board meeting. Good evening once again.
Good evening. I am still here. No, we appreciate your time tonight. Jennifer Gray from Keenan Bean, on behalf of Skanel Properties, the applicant for the Fishkill Commerce Center. I apologize for my voice, it's getting gravelier and gravelier as the night is wearing on. So I'll try to be as clear as possible and as short as possible, given the hour. So we were here last month when you accepted our application, this is our second time before the board on this application. Nothing has changed with respect to the project since last month, but, you know, obviously CPL has had an opportunity to weigh in with their comments. We do acknowledge receipt of CPL's comment memo from August 6th. We also acknowledge receipt of the Dutchess County Planning comments that are also dated August 6th. We've reviewed both CPL's comments and Dutchess County Planning comments preliminarily, and at this point, you know, we don't see any major issues or major showstoppers from our perspective. Obviously, we're going to vet each of those comments in detail and provide you with a written response. The plans will be updated to provide the detail and the information requested for our next submission. I should mention that I'm also joined here tonight by Glenn Harvey, the project engineer from McFarland Johnson. As part of tonight's review, we would like to request that McFarland Johnson have an opportunity to confer with the folks at CPL to clarify some of the comments and just make sure that we're aligned and on the same page for the next submission, for efficiency purposes. For tonight, we're happy to answer any questions. Like I said, we don't have anything new to present, because this is just our second time here, but we're happy to answer questions on behalf of the board or the consultants, and would otherwise look forward to your review.
Excellent, appreciate it, thank you. So you did make reference to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development letter from August 6th. I'm just going to touch on some of the comments, the topics that they touched on, they did bring up circulation and parking concerns, lighting, flood plains, they also provided some guidance on signage and the SWIP, both of which are, you know, being developed, but those were brought up in the letter. And as you mentioned, you beat me to the punch also on the CPL letter, so at this point, I do want to ask Liz and Christian for, you know, for their thoughts on the first review.
Okay. So I did a pretty thorough review. It was a pretty hefty submittal, so I really did try to spend the time to look around and see if I could find the answers I was looking for. So I'm hoping that this, this is comprehensive. The one thing that did hamper my review a little bit is I'm used to seeing the entire site on one sheet in, you know, a couple layers of detail so that I can really see what's happening, and I just didn't feel that I had that. So I kind of gave that upfront to just say, we need a different format so that we're really seeing all the existing conditions on one big sheet. And I did actually take a look at another project that is as big as this acreage-wise, and that's, you know, I thought, well, they can do it on a 36 by 48 or something like that, so it's possible. So that's why I didn't go into a ton of detail on specifics about the plans. And I did have a lot of specific EAF questions. I kind of have an overarching concern about the literal layers of water-related features on the site. So I tried to lay that all out right up front. Clove Creek is a, is a, I guess it's a trout spawning creek, so I, it would be nice to have, I don't know if you have like a habitat specialists, to really take a look at those things, because the big concern I have, I'm picturing this like a layer cake of, you know, a building site on top of four feet of fill, on top of, you know, soils that are kind of, you know, spongy or something, because you've got the aquifer and you've got the wetland soils in there too. And I don't, I'm not going to get that kind of feedback necessarily if somebody's just looking at a SWIP, they're looking at the stormwater lands here, here's where it goes, here's how we manage it, but it's not the same as looking at, what is the real effect on the aquifer? One of the big recommendations that I have on this one, because it's in the aquifer overlay zone and because it's over primary aquifer, is that the applicant seriously consider connecting to public sewer services. In this particular case, I feel very uncomfortable about a septic, which ultimately the idea of a septic is you, you know, you have a tank or some kind of pretreatment, and then you have effluent going out into the tile field, and the idea is that it does go down through the soil. So I feel a little concerned about that private system sitting on top of these layers of resources, but in particular, what ends up in the aquifer, because the town already has some issues with salt in some of the groundwater, and the town is trying to change its, you know, highway treatments to deal with part of that, and the town also did a huge study, I'm going blank on what it was called, but it was all, it was all about stormwater, a DWSP-2, that's what it was, and they're working with the state on some of those resources. So you may want to touch base, I don't know, with, see who has the DWSP-2 if you can look at that.
DWSP-2.
Yeah. I didn't even write it in here, but, but water, surface, groundwater, big concern, and so that's why I put in the recommendation about trying to go to public sewer. I'm sorry, go ahead, Fred.
I'm also concerned because that aquifer is also the big aquifer for the village.
Yes.
We get all our water, well, most of our water...
Yes.
From the village, it's just upstream from that.
Right.
And it goes by that area.
Right. So any effect of the aquifer affects a lot of people?
That really affects, big hunk of the, all the village and a big hunk of the town, because we get a lot of our water from the village, from that.
And I did check around, I know it's kind of a commercial area there, and I thought, well, are all these businesses in this area doing, doing private, and, but I poked around, and there are plenty of others that are using the public sewer, so it's not out of reach.
Can I, yeah. Can I address that particular, that comment about the sewer before, I'm sure you have other comments too, but, so we have started exploring that. That was something that McFarland Johnson explored well before we even submitted. The issue is twofold. One, yes, the commercial center in front of us is connected to the sewer, there's a, it's a private pump station, we would have to negotiate a connection with them. The next, the most, the next accessible public sewer is actually, it ends on the opposite side of 84, the north side of 84, so there would be some significant infrastructure work, and Glenn might be able to describe it a little bit more... work, and Glenn might be able to describe it a little bit more detail than, than I have, but I wanted to make mention that we have, we've had conversations with the village water and sewer folks, and by we, I mean the, the technical folks that speak that language. We've also had conversations with the folks at the, the commercial site in front of us as well, so that is an option that, that we are pursuing. It does have some hurdles.
I'm sure.
And some difficulties, but it is something that's been on our radar.
Okay. And I'm not sure who at Town Hall, have you spoken to anybody at Town Hall in Fishkill? Because there obviously, there must be some connections that...
Yes, Glenn Harvey with McFarland Johnson. We've been coordinating with the town and actually the village because the water does come from the village on the availability of the sewer there, sorry, this sanitary sewer, so.
Okay.
We're looking at options, but it, there are some hurdles that are going to be challenging, so we're looking at the viability of that.
Right. Okay.
Approximately, what's, what's your estimated daily flow? I'm just out of curiosity.
Pardon?
Your estimated daily flow, how many gallons a day are you trying to handle?
I believe it was around 1,300. I think that's what was in the EA, in the EAF.
Okay. That's a whole lot.
It's a warehouse, there's not a lot of employees there.
And the, you know, I'm thinking more in terms of cumulative for the aquifer, for any new businesses that come in, so.
That's a good comment. Is that, was that all the comments in your letter? Is there anything else?
No, I mean, I have some other ones. I do. Hang on a second here. I did mention that this would be classified as a type 1 action related to physical alteration of more than 10 acres, a facility with more than 100,000 square feet, in a popul, in a town with a population of less than 150,000 persons, and New York State Park land adjacent to the site, which is, that's pretty important too. It's the Hudson Highlands State Park, which extends the whole length of the ridgeline. And the other thing that I think would be worth it for the applicant and the town to try to coordinate on, there may be an opportunity here on the site to somehow make a connection, and I believe the most appropriate way would be to do it on the north end, so in other words, Dutchess County Community College is on the north end, and that's kind of a public place. So, if there was to be a way for people to ultimately gain access to a future trail, that somehow they would come in from that parcel, there'd be some kind of parking by grax, et cetera, thinking very big, very future, and then it would continue across the northern part of the subject parcel site, so that that way, if you have pedestrians, they're not interfering, interfering with the functioning of trucks coming and going and people, employees coming and going from the site. So, it would be along the north part of the site, which there isn't anything proposed up there. It's old golf course, so it's not like it's, you know, new earth, and then ultimately it would continue to the west and connect with the Hudson Highlands State Park parcel. And if you look at aerial photography, there are, you can see either old wood roads or roads and/or trails that are coming from the high points going north and kind of ending up at the northern end. And then you can also envision a trail that could go along the base, there's some flat area, and connects over to the old rail bed, which I'm going blank right now. It's the old metropolitan, no, that's not right.
Do you want to make the trail, the trail trail?
The, it's, it's the old rail bed that we put in the comprehensive plan update for a future walking trail and pedestrian trail.
That's on the other side of the river.
Yeah. Right, but this parcel of, of the New York State land ultimately connects with a neighborhood that, it connects near the...
Through Greenwood Drive.
Near the old railroad, right? And then...
Through Greenwood Drive.
Right, and then there are neighborhood roads that go through to a public road. So, there's the possibility of a nice pedestrian connection through there, and part of that would have to do with working one segment of, a potential segment of it out on this plan. So, that was another chunk. And then I talk about different things in the comprehensive plan that are worth noting in here. And let's see, there's another chunk of stuff that I wanted to touch base on. And then, I know you have trucks coming and going, knowing a little bit about, not that I've driven a truck, but knowing people that have and knowing about folks that, that have, that if they're parking their trucks and their trucks have to be unloaded, it's, and I know that there aren't, the next place where there's an actual truck stop is over in Newburgh, but there's plenty nearby, there's all kinds of restaurants and stores. So, the thinking was to make it accessible off of your driveway so that, say if a trucker is carrying a bike, which many of them do, that they can ride up to some of the restaurants or stores and/or walk. So, I'm thinking pedestrian and, you know, bike aspects along the driveway that would be specifically for your facility. They wouldn't be public. I understand not wanting those to be confused with the future trail on the north end, those would have to be kept separate, so you don't have interferences of the public with your private business. But, it's part of your private business is that these truck drivers are in there, and they may or may not want to leave the site to, you know, get a meal, get some groceries.
McDonald's is nearby.
I was just going to mention that. Exactly, exactly. So, I think, and, you know, that's a little bit more welcoming than just being stuck in a big, huge commercial area, as far as, you know, these are people that are delivering everything that we wear, sit on, live in, pretty much, everything comes on a truck, so. I'm just trying to think if there are any other really big issues. I already talked about the aquifer and public services, and I think those are the biggies. Oh, I know that you, it's, you, let's see, you have potential archaeological site, I know that you have a letter from New York State Department of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, and often lately, we're getting the shippo sign off without all the backup that was... So, so the board really must have that, you know, we're not going to spend a lot of time reading it, but it's important for the record and to know what's there, because that area is chock full of, all along Route 9. It's a pretty ancient pathway, so. So, yes, everything that you submitted to the cultural resource information system should be provided for the record. And there's also CPL's historic cultural resources map, take a look at that, because there are some historical sites and historical markers in the vicinity, and that's pretty important to the community, so. I think that the site development plan code items are pretty self-explanatory. And I think my main thing was to try to make sure that the separate phases, the existing conditions is one set. The demolition plan should be separate because that is a proposed thing and then the land of, so I maybe was a little specific, I didn't mean to be annoying, just trying to be clear. Let's see. And then I tried to give you on page nine, sort of a look ahead at the different type parts of the code that you're going to, you know, start to look at to address. You'll know where my future comments are coming from, but anything you can take a look at now and, and start to work on, is helpful. We appreciate that. I think that's it. Any questions from the board?
Did you mention somewhere in your document, I remember, I thought I remember reading that there was potentially an issue between the parcel boundaries and the existing land
boundaries, and you had requested, you had asked the question if there's a subdivision required, or then that should be delineated in the documentation.
Oh, I'm really going to...
There was, yeah. Just to be clear, there's no proposal for any sort of subdivision or lot merger, lot line change. So, any discrepancy, it was, was just an error and that'll get corrected. Because I do remember reading, it was at the beginning of, it was like first, within the first four pages.
One of the maps, yeah, there was, there was a issue with clarity in one of the maps, but the other thing that threw me off a little bit is that there's their parcel and then there's an easement for access. So, that's a separate issue. But, I don't think I'm hitting the point you're exactly talking about.
Well, I, I don't remember where it was, it was just something that caught me that I remember reading, and I was reading a lot. It was towards the beginning.
It was one of the ones at the beginning.
Yeah. But there is, there's no lot merger, no lot line change, no subdivision, so any discrepancy will be correct. I mean, the access is, is what is currently the access to the, to the golf course, right? Correct. It's obviously going to get improved, but yes, that's the access point.
Oh, that's what it, there was a, there was a problem. It's item number six, to clearly and consistently define the submit, uh, let's see, the project's boundaries must be consistent with the corresponding parcel lines that make up the site. Yeah, there was, there's definitely some clarity that we need, but it sounds like you don't need a subdivision or merger of parcels.
No.
Maybe these are old parcel lines, or maybe the lines on the map weren't clear.
Yeah, and this might be one of the things that maybe we, we talk offline about, just to make sure that we're clear on where it is, that, that you're seeing the discrepancies so we can make sure that...
Yeah, and I think what happened when I was reading the map is that some of the lines on some of the sheets were so similar, and the, the key wasn't really clear, and so I didn't want to spend time guessing if that was delineating something.
Well, it struck me as a potential discussion when, when we end up talking about fill, right? What has to be filled and what has, what doesn't have to be filled with the 275 to 300,000 cubic yards of fill.
Yeah.
Where does it start and stop and so on?
Yeah, and I guess, you know, my overarching concern is, I can't help thinking that when there's four feet of fill, you know, it, it's an extra, it's an extra bit of volume in the grand scheme of things. I, of course, it'll be graded in properly in the building, they would have had the building anyway, but the concern is with the extra fill, how does that affect stormwater and where it goes, which, we have stormwater comments in there, but also, if that stormwater's going someplace, then what is or isn't going into the groundwater? And of course, the aquifer is a big issue for the town, so.
Yeah, and, and, and we have to be concerned about at least 100-year event, if not more, right? From a climate point of view.
Are you concerned about the volume of the fill or what was actually in the fill?
Well, a little of, a little of, of everything, but the other concern is that what makes an aquifer, an aquifer is a certain kind of soil, and so if you're adding fill on top of that, I mean, you're going to be adding a building anyway ultimately. How is that affecting infiltration into the aquifer, either by quality or quantity? I, I think the question has to be asked, of course, you know, it is zoned industrial, but it's industrial land that has its hull and floodplain, so, and floodplain soil also has its own characteristics, so I just thought we need to really look at that to make sure that the aquifer isn't being prevented from having some infiltration or if, or...
Is that something you guys would be able to do?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if that would have to have the third party involved.
And a lot of it is pervious today.
Right.
And it may, and a significant amount may be impervious, and now we got, you know...
We have a hydrogeologist in-house, and we also have some specialists that we've used as subconsultants, but my impression is to try to do as much as we can in-house first and then see if the board wants us to have a specialist. But I figure we'll wait for the next round, see how much information we get, and then come back with those kinds of recommendations. It's a good question.
I'm concerned about the driveway, because the driveway's, the right away that goes in, it's really made for cars, not for trucks, and it's not that wide.
There, we will be improving it to be accessible for trucks.
And then the other concern is having three sets of lights within, you know?
I had that whole conversation with our traffic engineer, and he's also written, there are comments in here from the traffic engineer, but we did have that whole conversation because I think the stretch of road within that three sets of lights, it's less than half a mile, I think it's just a few tenths of a mile.
Yeah, like a quarter of a corner.
Right, right. So, it's a quick turnaround, and at one point I had a conversation with him where I said, you know, this is the kind of situation where we want one driveway to be mostly out and the other driveway to be mostly in, and how would that be coordinated? So, he did look at that and made some comments, and I think, go ahead.
There's a missing light there on that corridor.
Right, there's, there's one, well, there's one light that's in, and then the, the one that would be the central one, that's not in yet, right?
Well, well, it was, there was one there before.
There was, there isn't, but there will be.
It's still sort of there.
Theoretically, it would be there, there's, there's supposed to be a warehouse built there, but that is up in the air, the warehouse in front.
Separate application, yeah.
I was concerned about that, because there was a light there years ago.
These people are going to take it all.
Maybe. Maybe.
That's a much longer discussion.
It is, yeah, I, I will say, we have been in communication with New York State DOT as well, so, so they've commenced their review, and we've had some preliminary dialogue with them.
A really great resource for anything transportation, if you wonder where I got the bike trail and all that, is movingduchess.org, because you can turn layers on and off. And the town is very, very intent about having pedestrian and bike improvements anywhere, huge, there's a lot in the comprehensive plan update about that, so.
I just want to note one thing, Glenn checked the EAF with respect to Christian's comment or question about the, the proposed flows. It's actually 38, 3,850 gallons per day, not the 1,300, so.
3,850?
3,850 gallons per day.
So, I guess with that, I, Christian, I don't know if you had any other, I know Liz had your comments, Christian, I don't know if you had any additional...
We had some engineering comments, we don't have any detailed engineering comments, we'll provide those that don't feature today. We do have a number of stormwater management comments, but they're very, very specific. I won't bore everybody by going into, it's talking about, this elevation looks like it's four inches higher than this one. We can, I think we can work that out. I did want to talk about traffic, however. In our traffic section, the first eight comments, they're not even for the applicant to even respond to, they're just confirming that they did the traffic impact study in accordance with the criteria that they have to. The traffic study goes back to 2022, so it's a couple of years old, but they did figure the appropriate annual growth rate of around 2% when they did their calculations. So, the long and the short of it is, the models appear to be set up correctly, and the outputs are accurate, and their conclusions are valid. So, the results show that the existing configuration of the site driveway with just stop sign control is going to suffer significant delays. So, the report analyzes a potential mitigation where the outside southbound lane gets extended to the driveway, converted to a right turn lane into the driveway. You know, this is a, we... You know, this is, we think this is a good suggestion, it should be easy to implement. It also analyzes a condition where the southerly driveway is converted to signal-controlled. Now, based upon the theoretical traffic volumes, which are, by default, conservative, it appears that some traffic signal warrants could be met. Now, the results of the model with traffic control show that it would improve functionality at the side driveway on US 9. Now, although the signal warrants, although the traffic signal appears to be warranted, the warrants are based upon estimated traffic volumes for a light industrial development. That isn't the case here, the proposed development is for a warehouse, which are approximately one quarter as much as it would be for an industrial, so there's a question as to whether or not the warrants would actually be triggered with this particular use. So any approval of the proposed southbound lane improvements on 9 and installation of a signal obviously are setting with New York State DOT through the highway work permit process. They may be supportive of a signal being installed at the side driveway based upon the analysis, but they're gonna have to go through and determine if the model conditions meet the warrants, and take it from there. Ultimately, the DOT could be more cautious of approving a signal if the actual traffic volumes did not warrant it. The signal could be constructed at the developer's expense, however, DOT would ultimately take ownership of the signal following construction. DOT is always concerned at the end about, you know, long-term operation and maintenance costs for the state, so. Have you made formal application to DOT, or are you just, right now, you're kind of talking informally?
Let me.
Traffic impact study has been submitted to them, and we're starting to get review comments back.
Okay, so is your intent to go for the signal? I'm not sure what your intent is.
Because you're talking about the difference in the volumes that were used, I'm gonna look into that, and just make sure that that's the path forward that we want to go.
Right, because typically, if the DOT says, well, you don't meet the warrants, we don't want to expend cash down the road for a signal where you really don't need it.
Right.
You've got to hit the warrants, or, you know, again, that's the discussion you have to have with them. Do you happen to have an estimated timeline of when you might get response from them?
We just got some comments back today from the traffic and signal group.
Okay.
I could forward to them.
How long ago did you just submit to them?
Six weeks ago?
It's not bad. Not bad, getting comments. Okay.
Were we talking a signal at the golf entrance, or prior?
The golf entrance.
At the golf entrance.
Right at the entrance of the golf course, right?
That's the only entrance for this site.
That's it for the site.
Yeah, that's it.
For this particular.
Huh?
Yeah.
Question, how do we make sure that the traffic studies consider the cumulative traffic associated with the various different potential developments in that same mile corridor over the next three, so by looking at 2022, for example, and not thinking about 2026 and what that area may look like, we may be, you know, I'm thinking hotel traffic versus truck traffic all on the same stretch of road.
Yeah, if I may, you know, on that particular point, I mean, traffic impact analysis has to be done, you know, like, and taking into account all their pending and previously approved projects, it's not just looking at, you know, what the current status of traffic is there, but it's also projected as to what others are going to be contributing into that corridor. And so, you know, if you're the last one in, you know, you have to consider everybody else's traffic.
So the cumulative impacts are considered.
Correct, so it's, to answer your question succinctly, if I may, it's like, it's built into the entire process of traffic impact study, it's done under the appropriate criteria, like, it does have to look at the cumulative impacts of everything that's out there, not just this particular project's traffic contribution.
And the TIS, they also happen, you know, they go further than just the intersection they're looking at, they look at other major intersections, and they get the most up-to-date information usually from DOT regarding that, and they, you know, it's a model, I think it's called Synchro, you know, that's the modeling software that's used.
And the speed limit down the road, because that's right at that point where they start 55 miles an hour.
Right.
It's quite an interesting area, absolutely, right there. Because it's like a, it's like a race to bottleneck in the morning, and I'm talking a race to the bottleneck, and people coming from the other direction, so it's gonna be a learning curve if they have to, if you're gonna put a signal there, and if not, just gonna make it so that that would be
Corner.
An entrance for the trucks, and maybe exit through, further up, towards McDonald's, out where the other entrance was there, you know, the entrance and exit, because, yeah, I guess the DOT is gonna
Yeah, yeah, we've taken a look at, and the DOT, they're gonna take their look at it.
Right down the street.
They're gonna be using the same, the same criteria that we use when we prepare a study for review by them.
People will be able to look at the beautiful signs we have there.
No, they didn't do it yet. They didn't do it as much. Yeah.
That's really all the extent of the comments we had so far, did anyone have any other questions, or?
No, good for now. Dominic, I wanted to talk with you, I think tonight, at least in my mind, we would do a motion for the type one action, that would be something this board could do tonight, or is that?
Nope.
I would suggest that you perhaps hold off on that, I mean, although, I mean, it is type one action, it's just, the question is that, you know, the next potential step would be to circulate for lead agency, and it could be rolled all in together, and it's, you know, they need to respond to CPL's comments, and any other comments from the board.
So both of those things would be something to consider at next month's meeting?
Correct.
Yeah, we have no objection to the type one classification, it is what it is, right? And whether you want to make that motion tonight, or roll it into your circulation of notice of intent at a later meeting, we don't have any preference one way or another.
Which she said about rolling it.
Yeah.
But we do need
It doesn't get them anywhere tonight.
Exactly. I'm sorry. We do need a resolution to authorize contact, yes, and to make it clear that it's head-to-head, you already have that in there?
I've got that one, I've got a couple of motions that are, I was wondering which direction we might go, I do have that one, because I remember that came up last night.
One of each type.
So we definitely are gonna get there. Dominic, I just wanted to make sure, was there any other?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
Don't want to cut you off.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to get the board's, any comments from the board on this application? I did have a question, does this property, this property does have frontage on Route 9, or is that, it does not?
It does not, it has access via an easement, yeah, over the front parcel.
Okay. And I remember at the last meeting, there was talk about consideration of other access points, where, what locations were, were there any locations considered? I know right now, there's really only the driveway.
I don't believe there are any other
It would require, I guess, coordination with the Duchess Mall site, if anything, right?
It would, yeah, and I'm not sure where that, the most, you know, viable access point would be. Right now, what we're proposing is the current access drive.
Okay.
Improved for truck traffic.
Okay.
Should the property run all the way to House 284, right along the Duchess Mall?
It does, it does, yeah, it abuts the 84 right away.
That's why we take way back, because it was that part of the whole subdivision when they did that.
Yeah.
A lot of times, we gave second access, you know, with Duchess College, so there might be a
We'll speak to the folks that are reviewing title, and see if there is
That would be the maze block, maze building.
Right, up at the north side, the north side. Yeah.
And you might have an access
Yeah, that is also where there's more wetland areas up on the northern side as well.
Are you talking about the north end?
The north end, yes.
Where Duchess is?
Yeah, so there's more wetland up there, which is also why the southern access, where it currently is, is at least more environmentally viable.
Yeah, I'm actually kind of surprised that there isn't like a, there wasn't a thought process
Yeah, that there wasn't a dog leg or something.
To a, to a, you know, aggressive kind of that project.
I guess just a couple other comments, I think there would be the need for the tree preservation replacement plan, as per chapter 140 of our town code, and I know John, he's not here, but he's here in spirit, because he did mention the landscaping plan at the last meeting, so that is something that I'd like to just keep at the forefront. John, if you're watching, this is for you. And I think that's all I have at this point, so I do want to put out a motion to, is there a motion to authorize the applicant's representatives for Fish Hill Commerce Center to communicate with our planning board consultants, CPL? And do I need to, and Dominic Cordisco?
And just a clarification, to make sure that it's engineer to engineer, planner to planner, attorney to attorney, for, okay.
John, would you make that clear for attorneys and law boards?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. All right, I got a second and a third. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, I believe that's all the actions we need to take this evening, so
Thank you very much.
Unless there's anything else, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, is there anything else that planning board members or the team would like to bring up this evening? No? The next planning board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 12th, 2024, the submission deadline for that meeting is Wednesday, August 28th, at 2:30 PM. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, fourth, fifth, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Nice job, Anthony.
I had to get that in there.